And welcome everyone to our afternoon session of March 16th. We appreciate the privilege of having some of your time spent with us today. Before I officially open the meeting, I'm going to ask our incredible Assistant City Manager Nat to explain to folks how to participate because you might want to do that during general public comments, anything on our consent, also our one public appearance item, and also some of you may wish to speak about the closed session items. So with that, take it away, please.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two ways to participate in our city council meetings. The first is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to call into the meeting on your telephone. To join the meeting on Zoom using your computer or smartphone or telephone, please use the link that's listed on the agenda, which is located at isarchmontreal.org. And since the meeting has already started, you'll find that number on the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, you can dial toll-free 833-568-8864, and then enter the meeting ID, which is 1607729333. And once you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound one more time. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. We do ask that you please stay within a time limit established for today's meeting, which will be showing using a countdown timer on the screen. And if you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. If you're watching us on YouTube, there's a 10-second delay, and on Comcast Channel 25, a 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment from you this afternoon. Back to Mayor Roberson.
Okay, thank you for that nice explanation. So we will call our meeting officially to order. And Councilmember Tyler Williamson has been delayed at work. He will join us as soon as he can. And Councilmember Ed Smith had a prior appointment, which he absolutely needed to be at, and he will be joining us as soon as he can as well. So that leaves Councilmembers Dan Albert, Alan Hoffa, and me, Clyde Roberson, privileged and honored to be your mayor to proceed with our meeting. We're going to go right to presentations. And this is something that always brings joy and satisfaction and pride to our city council when we have an opportunity to recognize our employees who've had many, many, many years with the city of Monterey. And but more than that, an opportunity to really acknowledge the contribution that all the city employees make to the quality of life in our city. They especially over this last year of shelter in place have really stepped up with helping us to balance the budget, doing many jobs that maybe weren't in their job description originally, but being flexible, continuing to provide as much service as they can to community. And I know all of us received, it's just an amazing amount of appreciation and gratitude for the people who work for the city of Monterey. So with that, I'm going to turn it to our illustrious city manager Hans Uslar, who can do some introductions, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will be honoring tonight two employees who retired in 2021. Both of those employees have over 27 years or 30 years of respectively service with the city of Monterey. And then we will also be celebrating two anniversaries of two other employees. One employee has 25 years with the fire department, and another employee has 20 years with the public works department. And all those employees that we are honoring have really worked very hard in the city. And as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, the city, the city staff, the city council, our reputation wouldn't be as great as it is if it weren't for all of our employees. And so today is a great opportunity for us to honor those employees. And in order to do it correctly and appropriately, I will introduce to you Chief Hober, who will honor Robin Cosma. She was our police records and detention supervisor. And she retired just very recently after 30.8 years of service. And with that, I hand it over to Police Chief Hober.
Thank you, Hans. And I know that Robin is on the line here with us. And I just wanted to briefly kind of outline Robin's career. She was a police records detention supervisor. Her badge was 090. She's an integral part of Monterey Police Department for over 30 years, from 1990 to 2021, just recently retiring. She was a detention officer for four years, a police service technician for one, a police service technician, a senior police service technician for nine, and then the actual records detention supervisor for 17. Robin was a Monterey Police Department Civilian Employee of the Year in 2004. From dictaphones through smartphones, Police Records Detention Supervisor Cosma facilitated numerous technological advances in her over 30 years of service. Robin continually developed and led individual members' teams in the department, both informally and formally. She led by example and always exhibiting selflessness, professionalism, integrity, hard work, and caring to those she came in contact with. And what I'd like to just kind of wrap up with when we're describing Robin is that the day before she retired on February 23rd, she sent about a one-page email. And I'm just going to read a couple of quick parts from this because it really describes Robin's caring. "After 31 years at MPD, I am retiring, beginning a new chapter in my life. The soul of the MPD is definitely in its employees." And then she wrote under the section she titled "My Words of Advice", "I hope sometime down the line, when you think of me, you remember that I taught you something, made you smile, or I was kind to you." And that really exemplifies who Robin Cosma was. And Robin, from all of us, not only at the Monterey Police Department, but the entire city, thank you for all of your service to the citizens of Monterey and for all you did for us here at the Police Department. We very much appreciate you and congratulations in your next chapter.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chief Hober. We appreciate that. And I imagine Councilmember Dan and Councilmember Alan will probably want to say a word or two as well. So I'll open the floor to you, please.
Yeah, we just want to congratulate you. We hope that you enjoy what the retirement ahead of you. And we really appreciate all of your dedication for the city.
The same goes for me, Robin. Congratulations on your retirement. As a former or as a retiree, it's as good as everybody says it is. You'll really enjoy it. I'm sure of that. But thank you for, again, like Alan says, thank you again for your services to the city of Monterey. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
You know how you can tell a recent retiree, by the way, school district, city employees, they're the ones with the big smiles on their faces?
True.
And I just love Chief Dave. She said she hopes she taught you something, that she was kind and made us smile. I think that was really pretty. And I'm thinking that would be wonderful. That's a life lesson for today, isn't it? Then I was thinking, hopefully Robin will want to say something, but I was thinking 30 years. And think about the technology that the Chief Dave pointed out. Think about the changes of technology in 30 years from 1990 and so on. I can remember as a teacher when we got our first copying machine. And I thought we had gone into the far, far jetson future. It was amazing. I just imagine how many changes you've seen. So Robin, I know you're with us. Did you want to share a thought or two with us?
I would just like to thank the city and the Police Department for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens. It's been a ride. You know, the Police Department has literally been my family for 31 years.
Yes.
I have any family here. My family all is in Michigan. So it has provided me with family and friends for the last 31 years. And to them, I say thank you.
Yes, yeah, well, thank you again. And I'm sure you will always be welcomed down at MPD and probably will be getting phone calls. How do we do this and how do we do that?
Yeah, I have been.
Yeah, already.
I'm not sure if you know, but I'm a retainer there.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm kidding.
I like, what was that term again?
I'm a retainer.
Oh, you're a retainer. Okay. Good. Well, anyway, all the best, Robin. And we're just so happy for you. And you do have family in the city of Monterey, and that's all of us.
Thank you.
Right. All right, Hans. Let's go to our next person, please. Unmute, please.
The next person is Pete Ramirez. He worked for over 27 years in the Recreation Department or just recently rebranded as the Parks and Recreation Department. As a senior facility attendant, he cannot join us today. But I hand it over to Karen to say a few words about Pete Ramirez.
Hello, Hans and his council members. Thank you so much. We weren't planning to talk too much about Pete tonight, but I'm happy to talk about him because he worked with me very closely at the Sports Center for nearly 20 years. He's worked for the city for almost 30 years. He started as a part-time facility attendant and worked his way up to a 30-hour employee and then to a full-time employee. And then, of course, as a senior facility attendant, he is a tremendous person with the best personality, extremely congenial. Everyone loved him, including his subordinates. And he worked the graveyard shift. And so if any of you know how difficult that is, staying awake, staying motivated, keeping your team motivated, getting projects done overnight that you'd walk in the next morning, and it was just incredible. And sometimes they were doing things behind the scenes, things that really helped the Sports Center operate very well, but not always evident to people who use the facility every day. He was also a jack-of-all-trades. He could fix things with his hands. He was very creative, could build almost anything. So for someone to be a people person as well as a hard worker and also very computer literate, could do anything on the computer that we needed, was a master at scheduling. And again, scheduling people 24 hours, seven days a week, really takes a special touch, you know, because you'd have to really motivate people to work those crazy hours, including weekends and holidays. So he's going to be sorely missed. He has a tremendous amount of historic knowledge of the facility. He's agreed, similar to Robin unofficially, to be on retainer for our questions if we're stumped by anything or need some guidance. So I hate to see him go, but I'm so, I'm happy for him, but I'm sad for us. So thank you for this opportunity to honor him.
Yes, and as you pointed out, he's not with us today. He couldn't make it, but you certainly will wish, convey our appreciation and our congratulations the next time you call him for some help. Right? And you think about the, the Sports Center is 30 years now? Close, right?
Or close, very close.
90, I want to say 90.
92? Does that sound right?
Something, 91 or 92, yeah. And of course, as going forward, as people know, had a nice article in the Herald, Hans did a good interview, and that the Sports Center will be opening at a 10%. And I'm thinking that you're really going to appreciate all you can get help from Pete Ramirez as that goes forward. And again, it's, as I pointed out, whenever you walk into a city facility, especially the Sports Center, it's always spotless. Everyone is always pleasant. And we hear as elected officials, oh, it's such a great center. And we always say, well, we can tell you why that is. It's because of people who work there and staff it. And we hear that all the time, too. So be sure to give them our appreciation and congratulations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Hans, we have some folks who are still with us, right? But who are commemorating some years of service?
25 years of service with Gandhi Redke. Gandhi and I share, share one thing for sure in common, that we both grew up speaking German. And with that, I punted over to Fire Chief Gaudens Panhalzer, who will talk about Gandhi Redke, and Gandhi is also online with us tonight.
The Kultenachmittag? Oh, wait a minute. Yes, we're, that's, that's another thing I get to share as well. So Hans, Gandhi, and I tell secrets about it, other people.
We do. And one of us has, one of us has an Austrian accent and two have a German accent.
Right. And the one.
Before getting hired here in the city. And what's that? Can you hear me?
And you understand each other.
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
We need closed caption.
No, no, Gandhi was one of the people that I had a lot of interaction before I even started with the city. And she is one of those people that, you know, everybody has somebody in their organization that's the glue that holds a lot of things together. And Gandhi is definitely that in the fire department. She's just invaluable around the office, and there's very little that she can't do. And if, if she can't do it, she'll develop a spreadsheet to do it in. Definitely, if you ever need any help with Excel, give her a call. She's the spreadsheet wizard and makes a spreadsheet for just about everything. But it certainly helps keep us organized in everything. And so it's been just a really great pleasure to have her around. And she's the key behind so much of the work that we do with our, with our contract agencies, doing the projections and the true-ups and all those things and keeping our budget in order. So it's, it's really great to have her around. And fortunately, she is not one of those that are leaving today. So she, she'll stick around for, and she's promised that she'll stick around as long as I will. So I don't know if she knows that yet or not. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Gandhi to say a few words as well.
You're not making any announcements, are you, Gaudens?
No.
Oh, good. Sure, we're happy to hear from Gandhi, and we're glad you have joined us. Is she with us?
Yeah, Gandhi is with us.
Okay, she want to unmute? There she is. So Gandhi, we're just very pleased that you have joined us and congratulations on your 25 years of service. And the Fire Chief just told us that you basically run the fire department because you have control of the purse strings, it sounds like. And we know that obviously we see the, our firefighters and everyone out on the street doing all the service for people for medical calls and emergencies, and thankfully, not too many fires. But we know that this just doesn't happen without an incredible support staff. So we're just very grateful to you. So if you want to share a word or two, we'd love to hear from you.
I'm afraid it seems like her mic may not be working, so.
All right, well, maybe she'll be able to join us later.
Well, when, when Gandhi came to the city of Monterey, she used to work for the Police Department. And it's definitely the Police Department's loss that the Fire Department got Gandhi. And I can just echo Gaudens's appreciation when we started the collaboration with Pacific Grove. It was Gandhi who was probably the, one of the few people who understood completely every single number that was included in those calculations. And from there, of course, we were lucky to expand those service levels all with the help of our good friend and senior administrative analyst Gandhi Redke.
And you know, when you think about that, that is initially when Pacific Grove and the Monterey Fire Department's merged, more or less. And there were, I wouldn't say it was rocky, but it's a learning curve. And then as we've added Carmel and the airport, I know I'll leave somebody out, Help Me Gaudens Naval Postgraduate School. Who else do we do?
We do San City, La Mesa Village, and the Naval Postgraduate School and jurisdictions you.
Yes. So we're up to about seven jurisdictions. And just imagine keeping track of that, keeping each entity happy. And you know, here's something that a barometer sometimes is that I don't think we've heard any, anyone say, you know what, we want to split off, this isn't working. All I'm hearing is that all of the entities, all those jurisdictions, and all of the people are very, very pleased with how well the fire department's working, and that they don't worry about what it says on the side of the fire truck if it says PG or Monterey and so on. So that's really a testament to Gandhi and your whole department when you have people who, who basically, nobody's complaining. It's, that's a good thing. All right, so.
All right, I believe Gandhi's mic, microphone might not be working. Gandhi? Yeah. Looks like that. So, so.
All right, well, hopefully she, if she has a chance to reconnect with us, she can. So why don't we just go ahead then, Hans, with Jesus Garcia, please.
Yeah, Jesus Garcia is, is a senior custodian that I personally have the privilege to, to know from his day one with the city of Monterey. And our Public Works Director, Steve Witry, will say a few words about Jesus. Jesus is not online with us today, but I'm sure that Steve will relay his words to him as well. So with that, Steve.
Thanks, Hans. Yeah, Jesus is a little bit shy about these kinds of things. He's just a man who likes to get things done. And he's one of the, the army of individuals who keep Monterey running clean and healthy for, for the community. I was talking to Jesus actually last week about the 20-year anniversary. You know, he mentioned that he started as a part-time temporary employee. And, you know, he blinks his eyes and 20 years have gone by, and it's just he couldn't believe how fast the time goes. But Jesus was one of the guys who really is an asset to the city. We're really happy to have him. We're proud to be on our, on our team. He's our lead custodian. He helps train people, work through the process, and makes sure our, our ever-evolving army of custodians, sometimes it's hard to keep those positions, are trained and are keeping the community safe and our facility safe and healthy for our guests and for our own employees. So Jesus is a really great guy to have around, and I'm really proud to have him on our, on our public works team.
Well, thank you, Steve. And please pass on to him the appreciation of the city council. And we don't take these things for granted. It's, as an elementary school teacher, I learned early on that two people ran the school. Dan and Alan, you can identify with this, the school secretary and the custodian. So if you had those two on your team, you're doing pretty well. So it's again, one of those things where we just take for granted how, how clean everything is, how we anticipate. We hear over and over again about the public wanting clean buildings and services. And Jesus and team never fail us. So please express our gratitude and wish him many more years with the city.
Certainly will. Thank you.
Good. And it looks like maybe Gandhi's can possibly join us. I don't know.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Excellent.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Are you being shy or what?
No, I just wanted everyone to talk about me for a while and how great. I'm so sorry. I had some technical difficulties, but thank you. Thank you for your patience. And mostly, I want to thank the city of Monterey for my past 25 years of employment and continued employment. It's really been my unique honor to have served both sides of public safety. I was in the Police Department for 11 years. I started out as executive assistant to the Police Chief. And then in 2007, I promoted to analyst in the Fire Department and the later senior administrative analyst for the Fire Chief. So I've worked for three police chiefs and three fire chiefs, amazingly. I especially want to thank them all for their encouragement and trust in me throughout the years. I, I worked for Police Chiefs Floyd Sanderson, Gary Brown, and Carlo Cudio. And then I came over to Fire to work with Sam Maza, and then Andrew Miller, and now Gaudens Panhalzer. It's really been an honor to work for all of them and to work with so many outstanding city employees and members of the community. I also, as you said, I really had a unique opportunity to see the Fire Department grow from three to six stations through our consolidations with PG and Carmel and the Airport District. And I want to especially thank the city for your tuition reimbursement benefit because that's really what. Because that's really what helped me move from one position to another and complete my degree at CSU MB. Um, that investment is definitely, it may not be in a revenue report that you see from finance, but the value is turning behind scenes through so many employees. Uh, it's, it really does provide a good foundation for our public services. So it's an honor to be part of the city and no matter how busy we get, it's a gift to stop and remember we're all very fortunate to be working here together. Thank you.
Thank you, Gandhi, very beautiful words. Thank you so much. And it's something I know we as a council feel honored and, and city employees feel so honored to be living and working in Monterey. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you to Robin Cosma too. Thanks.
Okay. All right, and, and we won't ask her which department she likes better, right Chiefs? We won't get her in trouble. She loves them.
There's no question.
She loves them both the same. It's just like kids. I love you both the same. All right, Hassan, I think we're ready to go to public comments?
Yes, sir. We are ready for public comments.
Public comments, or if anyone in the public would like to speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. And these are items not on the agenda. If you wish to speak to an agenda item, we'll give you a chance when that comes up. Also, uh, many times folks uh, need follow-up. Now, we can't discuss it because of the state open meeting laws, transparency and the Brown Act. So we, we can't discuss items that are brought, brought up by the public unless it's a real quick informational item. But otherwise, you can reach our staff who will get back to you very, very quickly, almost always the next day. And you can always reach us at suggest@monterey.org. So if you need some follow-up, be sure to either leave your contact now or just email us tomorrow. So we'll go ahead then, Nat, is it you or Clementine who are in charge of this right now?
Yes, uh, we'll take the first comment from Dorit Gersh. And if Dorit can unmute herself, we'll start the clock.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. So um, Tuesday morning, I went to my car and uh, somebody took my catalytic converter. Uh, I'm not the only one um, that it's on the Nextdoor app that it's been reported that um, somebody stole their catalytic converter. And I was told there's um, uh, 20 people in the last month or so. Their catalytic converter got stolen and there's a waiting list for the part dealership. Um, so we have uh, right now enormous amount of theft going on in, in the neighborhood. Somebody's um, grill got stolen, a bike got stolen in our complex, a break-ins in our complex. Uh, my friend's van got stolen, another car on Nextdoor app got stolen. And um, I'm just wondering, is there anything we could do about it? Like put more lights on the, somewhere brighter lights? Can we put um, cameras on the poles somewhere? I mean, I'm willing to give $200 to donate to do this, to make our neighborhood safe. Because right now it's crazy, crazy, crazy that theft going around here. And um, I feel like you guys could do something about it. You guys have the funding. I felt, I feel like the um, bike path on Fremont was a waste of money, in my opinion, where safety should come first. Now, if you could do on the, some of the streets where there's more theft, like where I live in Delavina Avenue, near the fairgrounds, I think you could put um, cameras or something or better lighting. Could you look into it and see what you could do? And um, safety has to come first. And uh, it's terrible that people's cars are getting stolen, bikes are getting stolen. There has to be something that somebody could do about it. Talk to the police department about uh, patrolling every half an hour, an hour. I don't know what else to do. If you guys could network and find out what you could do to fix this horrible problem here in Monterey, I'd really, really appreciate it. And that's it. That's all I have to say.
Hey, thanks Dorit. Let's see if we have any other comments from members of the public for items not on today's agenda. And it looks like we do, oh, we do uh, have Robin Myers. So uh, Robin, please uh, unmute yourself and thanks for joining. Are you there, Robin?
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yep, hi.
Hi, okay, thank God. All right, so hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for allowing me to speak today. Uh, my name is Robin Myers, um, and I'm here as a Borgen Project Ambassador. Um, the Borgen Project is a nonprofit organization that aims to help eliminate global poverty through engaging citizens locally and in hopes of US leadership strengthening and going to help improve living conditions. Um, in 2015, the percentage of people living below the poverty line, which is at or below a dollar and 90 cents a day, dropped to below 10% of the global population. The rising of the middle class is happening all over. And with this increase in consumers, leads to more opportunities and jobs here in the US, let alone the Monterey County. So we live in a county that produces almost 400,000 acres of farmland. A few of Monterey County's top trading partners internationally were once developing countries. And with the right amount of foreign aid or investment, these countries become top exporting and trading partners. For example, Mexico, Taiwan and South Korea once received foreign aid from the US. And now our annual US exports to these countries far outweigh the cost of aid that was given to them. So with Monterey County exporting almost 330 billion pounds of crops in 2019, Mexico, Taiwan and South Korea received a good deal of this, as they're just a few of the top trading partners of Monterey County's produce. So members of the council and anyone listening, I'd strongly urge you all to contact your congressional leaders and voice your support for the legislation that the Borgen Project is concerned with, for instance, the international affairs budget. I'd also love to ask the Monterey City Council to send a letter to Senator Diana Feinstein, Kamala Harris and Representative Jimmy Panetta, letting them know that the council views global development programs as crucial for creating more consumers globally and new markets for Monterey County businesses. So this organization also runs on donations as well, so there are plenty of ways to get involved. But if you would like to contact me and discuss further about possibly sending a letter to our congressional leaders, um, my email is R O M Y E R S at csumb.edu. Thanks for your time. That was all.
Thank you, Robin. Appreciate you calling in. And uh, that concludes items not on the agenda from members of the public.
Okay, good. Thanks Nat and thanks to Dorit and Robin for calling in. And I would appreciate Dorit's suggestions and obviously uh, our city's gonna be looking at it. No one is pleased with the amount of thefts going on and the catalytic converters. Uh, there was an article in the Herald not too much long ago about that's happening in Pacific Grove as well. And Priuses are the primary target interest to me in that. So it's really not a good situation. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any uh, buddy in the public wanted to pull a consent item that we know of?
No, Mr. Mayor, not aware of that.
Okay, and council member question or anything to pull from the consent?
I just have a comment on number five, Mayor.
Oh, please, council member Dan.
Can I go ahead and start?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, I brought up uh, my concern with uh, number five the last time it was on the consent. It's uh, on-call architects professional service agreements. I, I'm gonna support the uh, staff recommendation. However, I want to emphasize that I still think it's very important that we prioritize our local businesses. Uh, they support us, so we need to support them. Um, I, I know it's very difficult to make a decision on an RFP and I respect the staff's uh, choices. But I still would like to see uh, more representation of the city of Monterey's businesses. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Alan, anything? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I, I made the motion seconded by Alan and roll call, please.
The um, council member Hoffa?
Yes.
Council member Albert?
Yes.
And Mayor Roberson?
Yes. Okay, we have the one public appearance item, that's to adopt a resolution extending the commitment of water about an acre foot. We, we had it to the five decimal points, very good. Uh, acre feet of water to a project at 591 East Franklin Street. And that extension would be to August 21st, 2020. I think it would be well uh, to turn it back to Hans if, I'm sure we've got a brief overview. Doesn't have to be too long because we're really not evaluating the project. But we'd like to find out uh, why we're at this point today needing another extension. And, and I'll have a few thoughts when we're done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A- as you know, the city since 2010 has at various occasions um, allocated water out of the city's own water reserve. This is, this water that is uh, allocated to city facilities, city buildings. And we generated uh, quite a few of those um, uh, water credits uh, through um, water reduction technologies that we applied into our facilities and subsequently also received um, uh, an award of, of credits from the Water Management District. But we also, um, when we purchased uh, buildings like the one at 735 Pacific, our building that presently is home to ISD Finance and HR. Uh, that building was um, a facility that came with, with a lot of water. And so we, we are routinely allocating uh, water credits from the city of Monterey Water Accounts uh, towards um, housing developments. And one of the, those areas uh, that we awarded water to was a project at 591 East Franklin. And what happens also from time to time that the developers uh, of those projects are um, working on the project but needed uh, more time or a time extension to get the project uh, built or extended. Uh, we are monitoring the progress on those projects. And without further ado, I, I punted over to Kim Cole, um, who will um, briefly speak about uh, the topic at hand and the request and city staff recommendation to extend the approval until August 21st, I believe, 2021.
Thank you very much, Hans. Um, I have a few brief slides that I would like to share with you. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Um, as was introduced, the city councils are considering a 90-day extension to the pre-commitment of water to 591 East Franklin, and it's just under an acre foot of water. Um, this is just a reminder of the project site. It's located at the corner of Franklin and Cortez Street and currently houses a repair shop for vehicles. And just a brief history over the years, as Hans mentioned, we've issued a series of RFPs. The last one in 2018, um, that RFP had a, ultimately when we entered into the resolution, had a termination date of May 21st, 2021. And the developer has requested a 90-day extension um, to the pre-commitment of water. Um, this is just a quick timeline of the um, that's been achieved to date. Um, they did submit an application for concept review in September of 2019. And a series of conversations occurred between our planner and the developer, providing feedback to the development proposal. The city council approved an amendment to the downtown specific plan um, in December of 2019 to be able to um, allow density to be shifted between parcels to achieve the amount of density we needed in order for a housing development to proceed. The architectural review application was received on February of 2021. It's substantially complete. Um, there are some minor items that need to be submitted. So we did give them their incomplete letter in May. So we think they're on track to receive their architectural approval um, in the near future if we receive the um, revised plans back to the city of Monterey. This is how far the project has come. Um, it is a four-story development. It has a commercial ground floor space with, originally you saw carports on the ground level. Those have now been converted to garages. And the mix of units has been refined. We're now looking, we always were looking at 18 units. The council had negotiated three low and two moderate income units. Um, but I'm happy to report that the size of the units has improved from studios to 12 one-bedroom and six two-bedroom units. So we have some really nice layouts in terms of the proposed unit mix of the site. Just a reminder on the income levels for low and moderate. Low is at 80% of the median, so we would be looking at inclusionary rents um, somewhere between um, actually, it looks like it fell down a little bit for one and two bedrooms. Um, it would be 1,291 to 1,453. For moderate income units, it's 1,631 to 1,835. So those would be the rental rates. Those rates are established um, by HUD and are updated annually. And the water allocation is subject to the cease and desist order and the water regulations. There are no new water meters to be established on the site. Um, no intensification of use, so it has to be within the water credits allowed. Um, we've also beefed up the indemnification language in the attached agreement in case in the future this project for any reason comes up against water regulations and cannot proceed. So with that, we're recommending the 90-day extension from May to August. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, good. So thank you for that, that brief but very succinct and on-point presentation. Questions from uh, our council at this point? All right, let's go public. Is there any public uh, input on this? Please, Nat?
No hands raised on this one.
All right, then back for the council. What are your thoughts? Are you ready to move on the resolution?
Yeah, I'll move um, to support the staff recommendation and uh, give them a 90-day extension.
I'll second that motion, but I do have a comment.
Okay, please, council member Dan, make your comment now.
Um, if I remember, this was uh, one of three projects that came across. Um, and we made a decision on this project, or we voted on this project to go forward. Um, I, I would really like to see this project move quicker than it has been. And that it, for me, going out on a limb, that the extension of water right now is um, it would probably have to happen this time. And, and so for me, um, let's get the project going, let's get the shovel in the ground. But I think this is it for me when it comes to an extension. I can go out on a limb and say that.
Okay.
And I totally agree with council member Dan that we understand sometimes things come up with projects and delay them. But when we're allocating water, we don't wanna see that water sitting there doing, not going to use. We want to see affordable housing projects built in a timely manner. So totally agree with Dan.
Okay, thank you. And I, I see council member Tyler has joined us. Welcome, Tyler. Glad you're with us. A couple of questions. And I'd asked this the last time, as you know, I, I, I wanted to have more affordable units. Uh, that was proportional to the amount of water that the city was contributing. And I don't know if you remember that, those figures, Kim, but I, if you could help me, what percent of this water is city allocated water? And, and if you could start with that?
So the .99169 roughly relates to about 12 units. So of the 18, it's roughly 12 will be supported by the increase in water supply.
Okay, thanks. And again, I'm, I'm kind of at the point where I, I personally think we should have more affordable units based on the amount of water that's being contributed. But I'm not gonna beat a dead horse, so I can support the motion. Then secondly, if you look at an acre foot of water, which I think translates to about 12 units, if I just heard that correctly. That water could possibly be used on the city-owned properties that we just uh, accepted RFPs for. And with that water, we could get 100% affordability, 12 units of uh, housing. So I think that's a, it's, to me, it's a game changer going forward that we might wanna concentrate on the city-owned properties that are gonna give us 100%. But on the other hand, in fairness to the developer, I don't think it's fair to say, hey, we're yanking the water away after, I'm sure there's been a big investment. But should this not happen, that definitely would think that would go to one of our city-owned properties that we've designated for affordable housing. And Tyler, any comments, did you get in here in time for the presentation and so on?
No, no, I won't jump into the conversation here because I wasn't able to be per view of the entire discussion.
Okay, so you most likely want to abstain on the vote that I would think.
That's correct.
Okay, well, we're glad you're with us. Okay, so I don't think there's any more comment, roll call, please.
Council member Hoffa.
Yes.
Council member Albert.
Yes.
Council member Williamson, you are abstaining.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks, and Mayor Roberson?
Yes. All right, was there any comment out there on closed session? We're going to adjourn for closed session here momentarily. Do we have anyone in the queue who wanted to speak on closed session items now?
We don't have anyone with their hands raised for closed session items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good, well, thank you. We'll adjourn our regular meeting and we'll see everybody this evening at 7:00 and we'll adjourn to closed session. Maybe take a little five minutes, give ourselves five minutes to find the correct Zoom connection and so on. All right, thanks, council, thank you, staff. Excellent afternoon meeting, and of course, the highlight would be honoring our long-term employees and retirees. See you in a few.
First thing we'll do is to ask our wonderful Assistant City Manager Nat Rochanasa there and explain to people how we, how they can participate, how they can join in on our discussion where we feel very privileged to have members of the public with us tonight. So Nat will throw it to you and then we'll call the meeting to order, please.
Great, thank you Mayor Ruberson. There are two ways to participate in city council meetings. First is to join directly on Zoom Gov using the Zoom app on your computer or mobile device. And the second method is to call in using your telephone. To join the meeting using Zoom on your computer, smartphone or telephone, please use the link or the phone number that's listed on our agenda. That is on the website at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has already started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, please dial toll-free 833-568-8864, then enter meeting ID, which is 1607729333 pound. And when you're prompted to enter a participant ID, press pound again. Detailed instructions on how to use Zoom is available on our website at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To make a public comment using the Zoom app, you can virtually raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button that's at the bottom of your screen. If you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine and then unmute yourself again by dialing star six. You must do both. Public commenters will be muted until it's their turn to speak. I'll be calling on each public speaker in the order of their hands raised. We do ask that you please stay within the three-minute time limit established for today's meeting, which will then also show on a countdown timer on the screen. If you're connected live on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. This meeting is also being streamed live on YouTube with a 10-second delay and also on Comcast Channel 25 with a 90-second delay. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment today. As always, we look forward to receiving public comment today.
Well, thank you, Nat. Appreciate that summary. So we'll call our meeting to order and I'm going to ask our insightful city clerk Clementine, I think you're going to put the flag up for us. And there it is. So I would invite everyone to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
And while we're at it, Clementine, would you introduce our caring city council, please?
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Williamson.
Here.
And Mayor Roberson.
Yep, I'm here as well. All right, continued public comments. And this would be an opportunity for the public to speak a maximum of three minutes on any subject within the jurisdiction of the city of Monterey. That's not on the agenda. If you'd like to share thoughts on our agenda items, please wait and we'll be sure to give you that opportunity. As always, so staff will be able to respond to you later. We can't do it tonight because of the Brown Act and things have to be agendized before they can be discussed. If you, any of the ideas that you have, you want, you can leave a contact or just go ahead and contact us at suggest@monterey.org, all lowercase. And then we'll be sure to get back to you. So we had some requests this afternoon and we will be able to get back and help with the request that we had during public comments this afternoon. So if you did, if you've spoken already, thank you. We'll have new people who have any public comments not on the agenda. So now let's see if we have some folks joining us tonight on this.
Yeah, we actually don't have anyone who has raised their hand tonight on items on the agenda.
Okay, well, then well, well, maybe they're saving their thoughts for our agenda items. So let's go to announcements from closed session. And Clementine, is that you?
Yeah, I can give that. I'm just clicking around. Sorry, hang on one second.
No, I get it.
Okay, so the on items, yes, one was the conference with labor negotiators with agency negotiators, Allison Houck and Gina Russo, regarding the general employees of Monterey, GEM, Management Employees Association, MEA, Police Lieutenants Management Association, PLMA, Monterey Fire Chief Officers Association, MFCOA, Monterey Police Association, MPA, Monterey Firefighters Association, MFFA, Monterey Executive Management Employees Association, MEMEA. On that matter, on a unanimous roll call vote, which was four to zero to one with council member Smith absent, the council gave confidential direction to its labor negotiators on the matters that related to general employees of Monterey GEM and Monterey Executive Management Employees Association, MEMEA. And on item CS2, which was a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation on the case of Bryce Morgan versus City of Monterey, there was no reportable action taken. And that's the report.
Good. Thank you. All right. So we'll go ahead to our first presentation this evening, which is to receive a presentation and report on community-wide greenhouse gas inventory. And what I'll do is turn the introductions over to our incisive city manager, Hans Ouslar. So Hans, if you'll take it from there, I think we have a presenter with us this evening and to welcome.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope we have an insightful presentation coming at you. There is a, there is kind of actually an unintended line of topics throughout the evening that that you will see continued with the next agenda item and also with a, with an, with a third agenda item that we will discuss tonight about the work program. And you brought up earlier this evening in the afternoon session, the word climate change. And you talked about that as a priority. This is very much connected to that priority as you described it. And tonight Ted will introduce a member of the Ambac team. And we will be receiving an update about our community-wide greenhouse gas emission report that that was generated and it will show you where we did well and it'll show you more importantly, in what areas we have to improve on. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ted.
I think Kim mostly was had some comments quickly to introduce Emery. So I'll go.
Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, Kim.
No worries.
No problem. So in 2016, the city of Monterey adopted a climate action plan. And I'm sure many of you remember that, that moment that we outlined our strategy on how to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city of Monterey. And that plan had a bold first objective, and that was looking at possibly transforming how our city and our region obtained its electricity supply, possibly through renewable sources. And that was, you know, at the time was considered a very dramatic step. And the city council later took a leadership role in the creation of Monterey Bay Community Power, which today is Central Coast Energy. And so it'll be exciting this afternoon to hear from Omri Bertau from the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments to really show what that program resulted in since 2016 and reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. But I think what's even more important is our city manager outlined is what are we going to have to do to meet our 2050 goals? And as he discussed, there's a follow-up item, the next agenda item about vehicle miles traveled. And it's a fairly dense subject in that it involves engineering methodology for transportation-related impacts. But I think it's that first step for us looking at 2050 goals and the very complex topic of transportation and how to transform our transportation system to be more sustainable. Ted Tarasas has done an incredible amount of work on our climate action plan. He was the primary author. He's available here to ask questions. But we both agreed that we just wanted to turn it over to Omri Bertau with the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments to provide you some context on our greenhouse gas emissions and how we're doing. So Omri, take it away.
Great. Thank you so much, Kim. I'm going to now start sharing my screen. Please let me know when you can see it. Can everyone see my presentation?
Yes.
Great. Well, good evening, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. As Kim said, my name is Omri Berto. I work with the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments or Ambac. And in our region, Ambac prepared greenhouse gas inventories in 2005, 2010, and 2015. And with the creation of the Central Coast Community Energy, they decided that it would really be good for all of the members to be able to have greenhouse gas inventories. And so they provided funding from Ambac to create greenhouse gas inventories for the year 2018, 2019, and 2020. So this is the first of three annual inventories that we will be preparing across the central coast for all three CE members. Now, before I get into the nitty-gritty of the inventory and presenting the inventory in detail, I just want to provide sort of broad concepts as well as a little bit of background in terms of what the state of California has set as its greenhouse gas reduction targets. And the first thing is just a few terms. When we talk about baseline year, it's simply the, the year that we use to track the progress of emissions against. So when we talk about, for example, a 20% reduction, it's always based on a specific year, which is our baseline year. Then when we talk about greenhouse gas, we really consider three gases, carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxide. And the way that the inventories are expressed is in CO2E, which is the equivalent of carbon dioxide. Essentially methane and nitrous oxide are assigned factors, factors, if you will, to convert them into an equivalent amount of carbon dioxide because they're more potent than carbon dioxide. And then finally, when we talk about community greenhouse gas inventory or community-wide greenhouse gas inventory, really what this means is that the inventory is trying to capture all of the emissions that occur as a result of the activities from the community within a given year. Now with these terms, when, when we look at California and the GHG reduction targets that have been set forth in various legislative bills as well as executive orders, here's, here's how it looks like. 1990 is your baseline year. That's where the state traps all of the emissions against. Then in 2005, emissions are about 15% higher than 1990 emissions. Then the first set of target was 2020, and that was the AB32 target of returning to 1990 levels. Then we have an SB32, 2030 target, and that is to reduce emissions 40% from that 1990 level. And then finally, we have an executive order that has set the 2050 goal of an 80% reduction from the 1990 levels by 2050. And that was an executive order that was signed in 2005 by Arnold Schwartzman. Now, this 2050 target is the target that the California Resources Board used in their 2017 climate change scoping plan. So currently, for any CQ purposes, when we consider greenhouse gas emissions, that's the target we're referring to. However, I think as some of you may know, in 2018, Governor Jerry Brown signed an executive order that set the target of achieving carbon neutrality by 2045 and for California to remain carbon neutral from, from there on. And so when the California Air Resources Board updates their climate change scoping plan in 2022, it is anticipated that they will be using that carbon neutrality target. And so this 2045 target will become the new target. Now, most cities, of course, don't track their emissions back to 1990. So they, most cities will use 2005 as the baseline year. And so when we look at these targets, really the 2020 target from 2005 was a 15% reduction. Then the 2030 target is a 48% reduction from the 2005 level and about an 85% reduction from the 1990 level for the 2050 target. So it's important to keep in mind that because we not using the same baseline year, the targets are slightly different. Now, when we look at your city, we see a really substantial reduction in emissions, and I want to talk about that for a little bit. The first two sectors that I'm going to talk about are residential and commercial industrial. In these sectors, we really look at the electricity usage and natural gas usage in either residential buildings for the residential sector or non-residential buildings for the commercial and industrial sector. And the, the way that, that we do this is that we get data from PG&E. And then we apply for the electricity, an emissions factor, which is essentially how carbon intensive the electricity is per amount of usage. And then for natural gas, there's also an equivalency of per amount of usage, how much emissions do we get? And so you notice there's been a 30, 32% reduction in the residential sector and a 47% reduction in the commercial and industrial sector. And the reason for that is very largely due to the fact that from 2005 to 2018, the electricity has become that much cleaner. And so that's why you're seeing such large reductions. Now, in 2018, of course, this is the year where three CE started. And so for part of the year, in both the residential and the, the commercial industrial sector, we do have that carbon-free electricity, which at the time was the procurement strategy. And so that's why the emissions are just, are just that low. Then in the transportation sector, this analysis only looked at vehicle mile traveled on local roads. So it's not looking at, at the highways. It's really looking at any traffic on essentially the streets that the city maintains. And we've seen a 34% reduction. And that's a combination of a slight reduction in VMT as well as the fact that from 2005 to 2018, vehicles have become more fuel efficient. You have more electric vehicles. And so of course, per amount of vehicle mile traveled, you, you have less emissions. And we have the solid waste sector where we get data from CalRecycle, essentially saying how much, how many tons of waste are sent out from the city to landfills. And so what we see is a reduction of 16%. However, you'll notice that there's been an increase from 2015 to 2018. And this is something that, that we've seen in quite a few cities where there's been that slight increase from 2005 to 2018. And, and that's due to just more waste being sent to the landfill. So the, the amount of waste being sent to the landfill sort of increased back up a little bit. And then the final sector is the wastewater sector. And so for that, we gather data from the Monterey One Water Treatment Plant, and then we assign on a population-based basis those emissions to the different cities that, that send their wastewater to be treated at that plant. So now if we just look at 2018 and how, how we break out, you'll notice that transportation is the largest sector, followed by commercial and industrial, residential, solid waste, and then wastewater. However, what's interesting is that if you combine residential and commercial industrial, you reach about 51.9% of the emissions. And those are what we call in, in the industry, the energy use emissions or built environment emissions. Essentially, they're your natural gas and electricity use. And they, together, they are the majority of the inventory. And what's really interesting is that when we look at just that 51.9%, because the electricity is so clean, what we are now left with is a large percentage of natural gas emissions. And so really, if I, if I may switch back to the other view, what I'm saying is essentially that your residential and commercial industrial emissions are mostly composed of natural gas and are mostly due to natural gas used emissions. And, and that really is an interesting, I think, insight to have because it, it does drive how you go about reducing emissions in the future. So I think with that, that concludes my presentation and I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry, that's my, that's my dog. And Gracie? Okay, so any questions for Emery? Thank you for the summary. We do have a very elaborate, very detailed report. We thank you for that in our packet. If anyone cares to read it, I think you'll find it really fascinating. Questions from our city council?
Yeah, I've got a question, Mayor.
Yes, please.
So Emery, on your chart, that was the one with the, the circles, bear with me while I go to it. You would refer, no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm ahead of myself. I'm trying to find the, the chart. Where you talk about the years and the goals that are statutory benchmarks. There, there we go. Yeah, the bar, bar charts. The last one is the reduction of 80% from the base of 1990. But the legislation piece talks about 2045. So why does your chart say 2050? What's the difference there?
The, the difference there is really that there currently are two competitive, competing executive orders. The older executive order, EOS305, is that 80% reduction by 2050. And, and that is the target that currently is in the 2017 scoping plan. So that's the, the current target, if you will. However, in 2018, you had a new executive order that was signed, setting the goal of carbon neutrality. And so the scoping plan, the climate, climate change scoping plan gets updated every five years. And so in 2022, when the California Air Resources Board updates that scoping plan, it is anticipated that this carbon neutrality goal will become the official goal.
Okay, obviously, it's a moving target and subject to change. And the other question is, can you explain, what does it really mean when you say carbon neutral? In terms of, you know, a layman's term, I know the goal is to reduce greenhouse gases. And I know the majority of that is coming from transportation. But if you could talk just a little bit about what does it look like if we're looking at 2045 or 2050? What does that mean when you say neutrality?
I think that's an excellent question. I, I think that that is something that everyone is trying to determine. Carbon neutral at its core means that on the balance sheet, the number is zero. And, and I think that's the definition that everyone says is accepted. And there, I think at every level of, of really the state down to the local level, everyone is trying to figure out, well, how do we do this, this zero business? And I think the accepted practice for now will be that there will have to be some type of negative emissions such as sequestration that will be needed in order to meet this carbon neutrality goal. But really, at its core, it would mean that on the balance sheet, on the inventory that CARB does every year for the state, there would be zero emissions.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. May I go ahead?
I think he's frozen, Alan.
Okay, um, is Tyler there?
Yeah, Alan, sorry, I was muting because of the dog.
That's okay. So.
Where's Tyler on the screen? I've, I've got it, four of us and. I've, I've got four of us and these, these views. Nat can, is, do you see Tyler, anyone?
Tyler's there. He just doesn't have his.
I'm here, Mayor. I just muted my, my screen for a second.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's fine. Okay.
Okay, so it's okay to go ahead. So my, I guess, first question is, if I understood correctly, between two thousand and five and two thousand and eighteen, the city of Monterey reduced our, our, our carbon output by thirty-eight percent. And the goal is by twenty thirty to be forty percent. Does that mean that essentially we're almost to our twenty thirty goal at this time?
So the, the, not, not exactly. Essentially, the, the target by twenty twenty was a fifteen percent reduction because these two thousand and five emissions are fifteen percent higher than twenty twenty. And that forty percent reduction target is, is the nineteen ninety level. So if, if you look at the two thousand and five, it's about a forty-eight percent reduction. So you're not as almost there as if it was just forty percent, but you're still a majority of the way there in the sense that you, you still have to reduce emissions essentially a further ten percent, and then you'll be at the two thousand and thirty target.
Okay, so about another ten percent over the next decade. That's, that's helpful to understand. And then I just wonder if you have any input or any insights on, since it looks like the major factor now is natural gas, what are other municipalities contemplating? Are they looking at things like phasing out natural gas on new construction? Are they looking at offering incentives to property owners to tran, to kind of transfer to electric from natural gas? Do you have any, any insights on what kinds of things other municipalities are looking at?
Right. And, and I think the examples you gave are, are, are actually correct. I think most municipalities are looking at things like removing natural gas from new constructions. So having building codes that, that prevent natural gas from being put in as well as incentives to somehow have natural gas being removed and then be replaced with essentially electricity using appliances, so electrification. And I think in our, in our region, three CE is, is leading the charge, I think. And, and they're, they have different programs that are really trying to electrify. So they, they offer incentive, different incentives and developing programs to, to do exactly that. But really, you will have, if you want to, to remove the natural gas emissions at some point, no new natural gas can, can sort of be put in. Otherwise, it will increase. And by the same token, somehow, natural, less natural gas would have to be burned in order to reduce the emissions.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was, I had sent an article to Ted, and Ted, you can answer that too. Santa Barbara, I think, just passed an ordinance with respect to not using natural gas on new construction and had an incentive program. I think that was the latest. You remember that one?
Right, yeah. There's a lot of municipalities in the Bay Area too that are, that are picking up that concept as well as some of the benefits of passive house construction and, and trying to kind of create basically a very well-airtight house so that you're using ninety percent less energy in that house, especially over the lifespan of it. And I think even at, at the city, we've already looked at implementing that. And when we've looked, we're looking at some of our construction projects here are, are starting to give sort of priority or put out the idea that these kinds of concepts are things we want to be looking for in the future and, and projects should be kind of keeping that in mind. It's not a requirement yet, but still as something of where we believe the city would like to go. So between, kind of between the, the building electrification standards that a lot of municipalities are building up as well as passive house standards, there's a lot of shift in municipalities towards really driving down the electricity needs and, and waste that is, that's going on in the, the residential and commercial sectors.
Yeah, thanks. So often we'll see a, a grade for a LEED certification, L-E-E-D. And the Conference Center, for example, got a, I forget, was it platinum, gold? Platinum, which meant it was built exactly that, to try to minimize energy.
I just need to, to say, I apologize, Mr. Mayor, we have not received any LEED award yet. We are striving for platinum, but we have not received an award yet.
Thank you. Okay, we got that. Well, it, it's a chicken in every pot and Mercedes in every garage. There you go. A council member down.
Thank you. You know, the one thing that I, I was looking at your slides is the solid waste figure that has gone up. So my, my question is that in the city of Monterey, we separate our solid waste into landfill waste, recyclables and green waste. And I'm wondering if, if that figure counts for the recyclables and the green waste along with the, the landfill waste and maybe because the recyclables are up. The numbers might be up over the three years, or do they not count the recyclables and the green waste?
So we only look at the amount of waste that was sent to the landfills so that the recyclable and the green waste would not be included in that analysis.
Okay, so it's, it's just the, the, the solid waste that actually is buried, not the recyclables. Okay.
Yeah, that is correct.
I, I think it's, it's worth pointing out, I was just looking at the two thousand, excuse me here, a UN climate report of two thousand and nineteen where it said that global food waste accounts for eight to ten percent of heat trapping emissions. And twenty-five, thirty percent of total food produced is lost or wasted. And so when we talk about what's going into the landfill, part of it is food waste. And I think there's a law that's right around the corner, which is going to require not only a resident, commercial restaurants and so on, but also residential to separate their food waste. So it's going to have to be recycled. And, and that's going to be, that's going to be very, very challenging. And I know Senator Laird has asked the state CalRecycle to take a look at that and maybe slow down a little bit during COVID nineteen. But that's going to be something that's going to come up on our plate, pun intended. Or, and we may have to be looking at rate increases. And if you take a look down at the Wharf, the city's currently building a recycling center. And part of it is going to be for food waste to be compressed, the water taken out of it and so on. And restaurants are going to have a, a mandate where food waste that goes on a plate has to be put through a recycling process, but also unused food is going to have to be donated somehow to food banks. And the whole idea of the logistics of that is going to be really challenging. So that's all coming up in the future too with respect. Question on CO2 emissions and transportation. We're a city of twenty-eight thousand people. Any given day, we have seventy-five to a hundred thousand people, most of whom have gotten here in an automobile, most likely, some flights, even more, obviously more flights and planes before that pandemic. How do we factor in tourism and the number of people visiting the peninsula in these figures? When you break it down to commercial versus residential? Could you help me with that, Armory?
Yeah, so these numbers, we, we gather data from CalTrans. It's called the Public Roads Data Set. And it's really capturing the amount of vehicle mile traveled on roads called local roads maintained by the city. And so it doesn't make any assumption about why they're here or what type of vehicles they are. And so then in order to get at the emissions, we use the California Air Resources Board MFAK model, which is the model that is used to calculate transportation emissions. And so they have a data set by county where they essentially are able to, to know what type of vehicles are, are driving on the road throughout Monterey County. So we just take the assumptions that really the, the vehicles that are driving on your roads are the same that are driving countywide. And then we calculate the emissions from that. And I do agree that it is, transportation is definitely the hardest sector when, when we really look at it. Because of course, like you said, people are traveling, they're not just staying in your city. They're, they're, they're sort of going all over the region or even from outside the region. And it can be quite hard to figure out how to reduce these emissions because it, it's hard to control what people do and, and how they travel.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any more questions? We'll go out to the public.
Mayor, I do have, I do have a few questions.
Oh, please, Councilmember Tyler.
Yep, so the first is regarding Central Coast Community Energy. I just wanted to maybe better understand what their role in it is with, with our relationship with them and how they kind of look at it from a regional perspective. Are there kind of highlights you can identify for us as these goals?
Sorry about that. I didn't catch that last part. Would you mind repeating it?
Yeah, just, just looking at maybe some of the goals that are being highlighted by the Central Coast Community Energy and the role that they play with helping us meet these goals.
Right, so of course, I, not, not being one of the staff, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but broadly speaking, they're a joint power for you, which you're a member of. So you're part of, of Central Coast Community Energy, and their mandate really is to provide electricity that, that is renewable. So when they started, they had a procurement strategy of providing carbon-free electricity. And so essentially, the attributes were being purchased, and, and the electricity was carbon-free, and the emissions are quite low as a result. In twenty twenty, they switched procurement strategy to a fully renewable, a hundred percent renewable by two thousand and thirty. So what we're going to see over the next few years is that the emissions are first going to increase as they sort of get rid of these carbon-free attributes. And then as more and more renewables are put in onto the grid, the emissions are going to decrease back down. It's unclear yet how much the emissions are going to decrease and how carbon-free compares to a hundred percent renewable, which you then get into a lot of details. But really, to make it short, three CE is there to help. And they're really, I think, here, they were created for the purpose of helping cities meet their goal and provide really affordable and renewable energy. And so I think they're a partner to work with in order to meet your, your goals.
So you, I think you raised another question there, which is the, the difference between the renewable versus carbon-free, and you were describing how it would have an uptick initially. Can you describe that a little bit further?
Yeah, and so the, the way that the electricity was originally procured was car, carbon-free, essentially in the electricity realm, as I understand it, you can purchase electricity and then you can also purchase attributes that sort of say what this electricity is. And the strategy originally was to purchase attributes saying that the electricity was essentially was hydropower, was, was carbon-free. This was changed because it, it was felt that it wasn't making enough of the difference in the sense that it was purchasing these, these paper certificates but not producing anything tangible. And so instead, we, we switched our strategy, or three CE switched our strategy of saying, we will instead procure renewable sources. And, and that will lead to more projects on the ground. However, it's, it's a different, you're measuring two different things. And so what we do anticipate is that the electricity emissions will go up by a factor of three or four until two thousand and twenty-six. And then by two thousand and thirty, even, essentially, even though the electricity will be fully renewable, there still will be emissions because there will still be a need for, during the peak hours, the electricity produced by natural gas will still be procured. And so we're not quite sure yet in two thousand and thirty how the emissions will be compared to when the carbon-free attributes will be, were purchased. And, and that's very much a question that, that everyone is still trying to, to better understand. How does carbon-free compare to renewable? And is it the same thing or is it not? So I think that's, that's very much something that over the next few years, we'll be having conversations with three CE about exactly what we can anticipate the emissions to.
No, it's an interesting discussion, and I appreciate you giving some enlightenment on that topic. The last thing I wanted to bring up, and it's more of a comment, but I'm also open to your feedback and, and thoughts about what you know of this. I know that there's a joint effort going on between Monterey One Water, our wastewater treatment plant, and the, the Regional Waste Management District regarding a co-gen facility at, at the Waste Management District. And so what this is going to provide is taking the, the methane that's currently, that's currently going out into the environment, using that methane and, and helping that provide energy for the plant. So it's a, a really great opportunity. And I mean, looking at the, the chart that you have on the slide now, it probably wouldn't make that huge of a difference, but I think at this point, any little bit helps. And so I just kind of wanted to throw that out to the public because if there are efforts happening to not only stop the amount of emissions that are going into the atmosphere, but leveraging those to be able to help produce energy.
Yeah, I think really at this point, because we need to meet these targets and the reductions in the targets are just so high, we need as many arrows in our quiver as, as we need. So I really see any initiative where we see agencies collaborating together to find solutions as something that's extremely positive.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your time.
All right, let's see if we have any public comment. Nat, do we have some folks who want to share some thoughts with us?
We don't tonight. No hands raised.
All right, well, bring it back and then I don't, there's, we can, of course, receive the report and it's, it's going to be something we'll be continuing to work on. I know when we did the council meeting on sea level rise, I've received about two or three emails, one from a whole neighborhood association, asking about what kind of action will the city be taking. So probably likewise, going forward, we'll have to take a look, as Tyler pointed out, what, what can we be doing as an agency, as a city, to meet these targets and working with other entities as well? So in a way, it's daunting, but in, in another way, it's a challenge. And it can really get us excited about creating jobs and, and really solving this problem, this existential problem that we're dealing with. So unless there are any final comments, I think we'll continue.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, a question on the process.
Yeah.
Tonight's action is to adopt this as a new standard. So doesn't this require a vote of the recommendation from staff rather than, rather than it's receiving a report?
Okay, it's listed as a receive a report. Let me get out of full screen.
Yeah, just, I, I'm looking at the staff.
It is just a presentation tonight, Councilmember Smith.
Okay, so then I'm misreading the, the recommendation. I, I have one closing comment, and I can accept this report, very fine report from staff and MBAG. I appreciate that. I, I can't say that I revel in reading the whereas pages, but I did on this one. With several cautionary notes, and I don't know that this is within our ability to modify at all, but this is based on the Senate Bill seven forty-three, which is basically requiring us to adopt this as a policy that is modifying somewhat the standard. And the impact is through the SEQA process. So the bottom line is, is what impact does this potentially have? And maybe that's a question Ted can answer. But as we review future environmental impact reports on projects that may be trip generators or moves away from us being successful to lower greenhouse gases, might this impact what steps we'll take in the mitigation of SEQA? So this is kind of a, we don't know, and it's a mandate from the state. And again, it's a state mandate with no direct funding coming our way.
Maybe I can provide some clarification.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
As I mentioned, there's two agenda items that are closely related today. And the SB seven forty-three discussion and vehicle miles traveled is actually our next agenda item. But we clearly referenced in this presentation about greenhouse gas and where we are today. This part was the presentation just on the inventory. Our next agenda item, you'll be correct, we are proposing to adopt a new threshold of significance, but they're very closely related. So we'll be discussing in depth SB seven forty-three, and you're right, there is no funding provided.
Yeah, I just wanted to get on the, on the record of saying that these things come out of. Yeah, I just wanted to get on the on the record of saying that these things come out of from the state. And maybe there's funding coming through grants or future programs, additional, you know, power stations, you know, things to help restaurants, things to help transportation. So I I know that we've got more reports going, but I just wanted to, you know, I don't want to take these things lightly and recognize that this may have impacts to future environmental impact reports in the way the industry or the city may have to struggle to mitigate. So that was the only comment I had.
Yes, and and it's, we we get from Sacramento legislation that has lofty goals. And then it's up to each local jurisdiction to implement them without money, and that's always a challenge.
Yeah, I'll have another comment later on vehicles mile travel as it relates to the transportation authorities' efforts to understand the matrix that's moving from Sacramento.
Okay, well, good. If you can understand it, that that will be wonderful. All right, let's go ahead to then the next one is to adopt a resolution designating vehicle miles traveled as the metric for conducting transportation impact analyses. So we're going to leave that to our very intelligent staff to explain what this is all about.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And and as we we said twice tonight, there's a straight line from the first report that we received from M-BAG to our action item in front of you tonight. And our, and I use the word I as well, interim principal planner, Fernanda Rovere, will introduce the item and talk about exactly SB 743 and vehicle miles traveled. And here you go.
Okay, welcome, Fernanda.
Thank you, everyone. Yes, so as Hans said, this is a mandate by the state. It was passed by Senate Bill 743, and it changes the way that we evaluate transportation impacts under SEQA. So before, they used to be evaluated by LOS, which is Level of Service, which is another way of saying how much congestion is a new project going to cost. And so we we can no longer evaluate transportation impacts based on the congestion that they will cause. The new metric that we are required to use is vehicle miles traveled. So this is another way of the state moving toward reducing greenhouse gas emissions through the way that we evaluate transportation. And so by projects that have a high vehicle miles traveled threshold, they that means that they are more likely to produce more greenhouse gases. And so we have here Mike Schmidt from Kimley Horn, and he's going to give a presentation about what the city has done to adopt, to recommend adoption of vehicle miles traveled thresholds and criteria for evaluating transportation projects. So Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Fernanda. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Let me share my screen and we'll get going.
Good evening and welcome.
Everyone see it okay?
Yep.
Great. So as Fernanda said, I'm going to be talking about SB 743 and traffic analysis this evening. And I think, you know, Kim did a great job of setting this up. It is pretty dense, so with apologies, there's a lot of material to consume. But it it's probably important to kind of start, you're really going to understand it, we got to dig into a little bit of the detail to go to understand how it's going to be implemented. So here's the major items I'd like to cover today. I am going to do a little bit of history lesson, so we're going to go back and talk a little bit about level of service. Ms. Fernanda suggested that that's that's been the history of how we've done it to date, so let's talk a little bit about how that was done. And then we're going to talk about how SB 743 changes that. And really, what that really changes is we can start talking about vehicle miles travel, and we'll talk about how we analyze that, how we mitigate some other items. We will do a little bit of a dive into the proposed SB 743 policy for the city. So we'll take you through across the process of a typical developer, a typical applicant would have to go through as part of SEQA. And then kind of set up for you what the future kind of holds, what are the next couple of steps after this. So level of service is something that's been around since almost the 1950s, and it's it's really based on congestion, as Fernanda said. And in the first manual that came out was in the 1950s. So this is something we've been working with for almost 70 years now. So we've got a lot of experience with it. And it's really guided transportation decision-making all over the United States for that for that period of time. But over that period of time, we've also realized with experience that it's not always ideal. There's been some instances where it's kind of resulted in some unforeseen outcomes. And some of that have been, it's tied to urban sprawl, it's had some negative impacts to active transportation. And if you think about how that works, you've got an intersection, you keep widening it to facilitate car traffic. Well, that ends up hurting pedestrians and bicycles. And then there's a phenomenon called induced demand, and I think we've all experienced that where there's this, every time we seem to widen the freeway, we seem to fill it back in. And really what we've learned through research is that's because some trips are being suppressed. Some trips aren't being made because people are just frustrated by congestion, but when we free up congestion, well, they start making those trips. And but like I said, you know, this, it's worth pointing out, the level of service is no longer a SEQA consideration. That's that's a key element. It doesn't mean that level of service can't be used, but you can't use it in a SEQA context anymore. So this is just an illustration to give you a sense of what level of service looks like. You know, it's it's it, we we use a report card, almost like grading thing. You know, I I think in historical perspective, I think folks are sorry that they went with A, B, C, D, E, F, because we don't always mean that, you know, E or F is, or E or D may be appropriate under some circumstances. But I think if some of these kid brought that home, they get upset about that. So that's not really always the case. But this gives you a sense of what that kind of looks like from the illustrative standpoint. So to kind of set up SB SB 743, I first want to kind of talk about SB 150 to kind of give you a sense of where the state's at. And this is probably, even even though Monterey's doing very well, as Amory shared with us, the state's not doing as well in terms of where it wants to be in terms of reducing BMT and reducing reducing the resultant greenhouse gas emissions. And this graphic is straight out of a report that was mandated by the state to do as the executive summary. And basically, it shows where, you can see where the MPOs want us to be. This is where they want us to be as we look forward to the future. But what we've seen is things started to get better in 2005, and then they started to get worse. Or they started, they started to get, they started to get worse as they came out of recession. So you can kind of see this really just tells us the history of our economic recession. And as things have continually gotten worse, BMT is going up and greenhouse gas emissions are as well going up across the state. So what is SB 743? So SB 743 is SEQA specific, and that's worth pointing out. This this is required by the state, so if somebody comes in and needs to do an environmental review, this is part of that. It's the basis for a transportation significant impact determination. Previous thing was level of service, that's not allowed allowed any longer. Now it's BMT and SB 743. And it's worth pointing out, SB 743 is a little broader than just BMT. I think everyone immediately wants to start talking about BMT, but it really seeks to promote a broader set of goals, which includes denser infill development, reducing single occupancy vehicles, and improving mass transit. It became law, it became required on July 1st, 2020, that all environmental documents deal in SB 743. So it's already in place, so if any any SEQA documents that are being prepared right now have to have to include this. The state had the Office of Planning and Research, the Governor's Office, prepare guidelines, and those came out in 2018. And that's really been kind of the basis that most jurisdictions throughout the state have kind of built their plan on. And that's the basis that we helped to develop your plan on. Although it's not required that we specifically follow that, but that's kind of been the best practice. It, some of the elements of SB 743 are also that land uses need to be analyzed separately. And I'll show you in a moment how that looks visually. BMT is the principal metric once again. And again, SB 743 doesn't preclude using level of service, you just can't use it for SEQA. So what is BMT? This is just a simple illustration of what it is. So if you imagine we've got four vehicles, they travel three miles, it's simply 12 BMT, so it's four times three. So that's how we calculate BMT. We just take the length of roadway and we take a look at the amount of vehicle traffic that's on it and multiply it together. Now I'm going to talk a little bit, this is kind of probably getting to that denser part, but it's probably worth understanding a little bit of the mechanics of how do we decide what thresholds are and how do we calculate them. So this first example kind of shows you how we deal with residential. And and as I said earlier on, we deal with land uses separately. So if you have a development with three different land uses, each one of those land uses need to be evaluated separately. So let's imagine a development that has a residential component. Well, over the course of the day, you know, the, you know, this family, and imagine this is many homes. I'm just using an example of a single home, but imagine it's many homes. Well, folks make trips to things like school, they make shopping trips, they go to work. And so what we do is we total up or estimate that amount of BMT that they create, and then we divide through by the number of people. So it's basically BMT per capita. Similarly, if I take an office land use, we look at the employment trips coming and going from the office. We look at perhaps a supplier, a customer that might come to it. So we try to in totality capture the amount of BMT. And in this instance, we divide through by the number of employees. So this is BMT per employee. So these two are what we call efficiency metrics. So that's a term we kind of throw around when we're talking about BMT as these efficiencies. So it's per capita, per employee. Now, there's another type of land use, which is net change. And this is a little bit different, but this hopefully this example kind of illustrates for you how we look at it. One of the real beneficiaries of SB 743 is retailing this. And this gets at exactly why retail is kind of one of the few folks really is a winner when it comes to evaluating this. Is because basically, if you think about a grocery store trip, well, you make that trip regardless of whether the store is five miles away or 10 miles because you got to eat. So the idea is if we put grocery stores closer to people, we naturally reduce BMT. So it's a little bit different than housing or or offices. It it's it, it has the net effect of reducing BMT. So we look at this, when we look at like a retail store or something else that we consider customer-based, like a like a medical office or a dentist's office or a school. I mean, those are trips you're going to make because you need to make them. And if we put those uses closer to you, well, it has the effect of reducing BMT. So in these instances, you can kind of imagine, we've got, you know, these folks right here, these two homes that are making three-mile trips to go to the store, but we put a new store in closer to them, now they're making one mile. So there's overall a reduction in BMT. So a little bit different, and that's why you'll often hear retail as being a beneficiary of SB 743. Similarly, this is just a quick example of how a hotel might work, same kind of idea. If everybody wants to be near the beach or convention center, you know, if we put another hotel closer, well, that prevents people having to stay further and further, further away kind of thing. So it reduces their daily trip trips. So kind of bring it first or full circle, I kind of said, well, what if we have a mixed-use development? So let's imagine somebody comes in and says, okay, I've got a project that's residential, office, and retail. Well, each one of those need to be evaluated in their own right. Now, you do get credit because, you know, obviously, we want to promote mixed to mixed use, and mixed use is a great thing in terms of reducing BMT typically. And so the idea is that you would still get the reduction if your employees are nearby and residential. You'd still, when we calculate it, it would be, we'd still get take that reduction, but we still have to look at each one of the uses uniquely. So in this example, you can see the residential doesn't have an impact, but the office does, the retail doesn't. So in this instance, if we had this mixed use, then we have a finding that the office use on the site has an impact. So that kind of brings us to, well, now we need thresholds. So we know how to calculate BMT, and you know this is one of those instances where it's kind of the aha moment, that these are pretty aggressive thresholds. So the states kind of come down through OPR and said, here's what we kind of recommend. And they've said, we recommend 15% less than the BMT per average, BMT per capita. So that's the, if you take the residential average, it's 15% less than that. Similarly, offices the same way. So that's a pretty significant, you know, it's a pretty big goal. I mean, it's not a small amount of, you know, of BMT, you know, you need to be below the average, you got to be better than the average by 15%. Likewise, retail net increase, transportation is also covered by this. I'm not going to talk a lot about that today, but that is a unique problem in its own way because almost any any widening that's of any significance, any length of roadway where we do a widening project, often that's going to have an impact because of induced demand, as I said earlier. And it's worth pointing again that neither statute or SEQA guidelines specifically have thresholds. This is what the states make as suggested, and that's what most folks are following. But if we don't follow that state's recommendation, we need substantial evidence. And, you know, if that obviously rises to a certain legal standard, we need to make sure we can demonstrate why this is fulfilling the goals of the state. So again, just what happens when a an applicant comes in. Well, and there, the documentation that we prepared in cooperation with city staff is really geared towards it's geared towards being used. It's not really a theoretical document, so it's very, it's very flowcharty, very, here's the steps you need to follow kind of approach. And I'll kind of touch on these, I'm just going to talk about the six big, high-level steps to kind of give you a sense of what those folks will have to experience when they go through this analysis. But there's a lot more detail if folks want to dive into it. So the first step is evaluate land use. So in this step, we just typically, this is where folks put land use from a planning terms into traffic terms. So we use standards that we all know, like IT, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. This is the point where we say, hey, this is a mixed-use project or not a mixed-use project, and is there any additional gains that we need to consider in the analysis? And then we also identify if it's a redevelopment project, and I'll talk about what that means in a second. During the second step, we screen the project to see if there are any opportunities to kind of have a me, basically, immediate finding of non-significance. So there are some essentially, some circumstances where we'll say, well, based on the facts of this project, we can already have a finding of non-significance. And just to highlight some of them, a small project, so a tru- a project that maybe has less than 110 trips per day, which is about 10 single-family units, can have a finding of non-significance on the base of the facts. If you're close to high-quality transit, you know, obviously, as I said, we're trying to promote high-quality transit. Local serving retail, well, we just, you know, for the for the reasons I explained earlier, if it's a store that's smaller than 50,000 square feet, we can have that finding. Affordable housing, we know from experience that lower-income folks both tend to locate closer to their employment opportunities and make fewer trips overall. Local alternative services, like medical office buildings, those types of things. And then there's the opportunity for map-based screening, which is basically that we pre-populate a map. And so if there's areas where folks are trying to put something, we can kind of make it easy for them to make it a termination. And then finally, redevelopment. And I'll just talk about redevelopment quickly on the next slide. But basically, redevelopment works like this. If I had an existing site, and let's say I had 10,000 BMT, and then I said, okay, well, I'm going to raise that, I'm going to get rid of the retail office, and I'm going to put homes in instead. If this use is less intense than this prior use, well, I can have a finding of non-significance on that base of that. You can see that this is smaller BMT than this one. So that leads us to what are the thresholds for the state? So these are the thresholds, you know, like I said, residential, we have 9.7 BMT per capita, offices 6.6, retail net regional, regional change, other employment, we have other items. It's worth pointing out that the way we calculate this is we use the travel demand model. So there, you know, the M-BAG has created a model that covers the whole region. There's been some additional work on it to fit to this specific use, but that's how we do it. That's how we forecast and estimate this. So this is based on travel demand model output. After somebody's gone through those steps, they basically firm an agreement or it's a recommended approach to the city and staff reviews it to make sure that we're on the same page. And that's just to avoid the obvious. We don't want folks to have to redo it or or kind of miss it on the first boat. And after we're done with that, we do the analysis and make a finding. And if there's a finding of impact, well, then we move on to mitigation. And I think as somebody had said earlier, you know, mitigation is really the new challenge that we're all facing when we talk about SB 743. We know a lot about level of service. If we go back, we know how to widen a roadway or fix an intersection. Mitigating BMT is a become, is a more of a challenge because we have to use things that are, the toolbox is newer to us. And so we end up looking at things like these, many of these, what we call transportation demand measures. So these are incentives or infrastructure items that we can use to basically reduce BMT. And then finally, after that, that's concluded, we're on a mitigation monitoring. And that's kind of a unique set of circumstances with BMT because it's not, once again, it's not we're just widening intersection or widening a road. We need to actually monitor this after the fact, and that's a requirement of SEQA. So sometimes that requires some very special language put into development agreements or requires the applicant for a couple of years or something like that to come back and to demonstrate that their BMT is low enough. And that that's often done by doing things like counting traffic at a driveway. Just want to highlight too that there, as part of the work that we've done with the city, we prepared We prepared a soft or a very simple, like, I shouldn't cover it simple, but it's a spreadsheet tool that basically allows folks to do evaluations and also to test different mitigation strategies. And and the beauty of this tool is you don't need to be a hardcore traffic engineer or no travel demand modeling. This is something that most anyone could use, where they could just basically put an address and put various information about the tool. And as long as the development's within certain parameters, they can find out where they're going to stack and how the CO2 emissions are going to look and some other good stuff like that. So just in terms of looking forward after, you know, S B seven forty-three, there are still many mobility considerations that don't relate to B M T that still need to be talked about, like safety, access, congestion, multimodal. We don't want to lose sight that B M T isn't the answer to all of these problems. So there's also the need to talk about after this, how does level of service fit into the city's strategy? Or does it fit into the city's strategy moving forward? Thank you very much.
Well, and thank you. That was very thorough. We have questions at this point from the council before we go out to the public, Councilmember Tyler, please.
Yes, I'm just wondering, what does this look like as far as implementation in the city? So I understand that we're, we're likely to, to approve this tonight. What is that, what does this mean as far as it actually being a standard in which how we look at projects moving forward?
I'm happy to answer that. So currently, projects have to prepare a traffic report for level of service as they are being considered. And so the metric is changing to vehicle miles traveled. So the new traffic reports will use this metric. And I think what we'll see coming out of it is a different type of mitigation. For example, you know, are there contributions towards bike routes? You know, how are we getting people out of their cars? And how are we going to monitor it over time? So I think that's the piece that will look a little bit different than today. But in terms of technical analysis, that happens today, it's just going to be a different metric.
So pretty, I'm assuming that there's some projects that are already in the works that will continue using the old metrics for, but. Oh, so if it's in, if it's a live project, we're, we're going to start using this new metric.
In fact, we just released a initial study today and it used vehicle miles traveled. The new metric actually legally went into effect in July of 2020. And we've been working on our threshold and just providing our specificity. And so hopefully you'll adopt that tonight and we'll have that in law. I think most of the cities in Monterey County have yet to adopt, you know, a substantial evidence metric yet. So we're a little ahead of the curve, but behind as well.
Yeah, no, this was actually one of the M B E P recommendations. And I was actually going to agendize this for a later council meeting, but I'm glad that we're able to, in a way, check this here because this was something that, that has, has been of much interest. I do just want to bring up one more thing. There was the mapping thing on your presentation, Mike. And I'm wondering, is there, is there a map already available, what that looks like? Because I wonder how much of the city is probably already covered in, in a lot of these instances?
Yeah, that's a great question. And unfortunately, I don't have the map with me today, but I can tell you that the map is pretty green. Actually, the, the city, not surprisingly, when we look at the entire area, it is one of the denser parts of, of the county. So it does pretty well when it comes to this.
If that's something that could be shared, I would love to just take a look at that.
Yes.
Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Any more questions? Councilmember Allen?
Um, yeah, Kim. So as I understand it, this V M T standard is already state law. And so essentially, whether we adopt this, this or not, in essence, projects that are move forward in Monterey will have to meet the Sequo standard. So I guess my, my question is, what is it really that you're looking for, from us tonight? Is it whether or not we continue to use level of service as well as an additional sort of standard that we evaluate projects by? And if so, what, what are your, what, what are your observations on the impact that would have on projects? Would it make projects more expensive? You know, could, just could you speak to that? Is that something you, you would recommend or not recommend?
So I don't think we're ready yet to discuss level of service and whether or not we should continue to implement level of service. It's something that we've been discussing extensively at the staff level. And I think in the near future, you'll see us coming back to you with some recommendations. What we did want to bring forward was vehicle miles traveled. Because as mentioned, the concept of vehicle miles traveled as the threshold for Sequo has been required since July 2020. But cities and various agencies are intended to adopt basically a procedure and proposed mitigation. So developers can, they basically have a pathway to understand how to evaluate the impact and then how to mitigate it. And so that's really what the, the attachment to the resolution contains is it's a, it, it contains the information for the traffic engineer to be able to conduct the analysis. And then it provides some recommended strategies to reduce B M T. I think there's over 40 of them with percentage reduction. So we're looking to get fairly specific for the city of Monterey based on just really studying with Kimberly Horn and I think Andrea Rennie's on the phone as well or on the call with Ann Fernanda, discussing how it would apply within the city of Monterey. So each jurisdiction in Monterey County will most likely be going through the same process that we're doing right now. We're just a little bit ahead of that.
Okay, so we're, what we're really doing is approving a methodology for calculating it for our projects and identifying strategies that could be used to mitigate.
Correct.
Great. Okay, I've got some comments. I'll wait till after the public.
After the public.
If I, if I may add one piece of information, level of service is not a sequel consideration anymore. So this is now vehicle miles traveled and levels of services doesn't constitute anymore sequel mitigation possibility, et cetera. So that, that's a significant change that, that Mike pointed out at the beginning of his presentation as well.
Now, thank you, Hans. A question I have, maybe I missed it. Let me preface it with, currently, I think there are about five auto manufacturers who have an agreement with the state of California to meet California's higher mile per gallon threshold. And I know the Biden administration is looking at restoring some of the Obama mile per gallon. Stay with me, I'm going to get there. And so the, some of the other automakers are trying to negotiate. And what they've pointed out is, well, we have to persuade people to buy other vehicles besides SUVs and trucks, which are two thirds of the market. So that leads to my question, and maybe I missed it, and sorry if I did. You can do vehicle miles, but it's the quality of that mile as well. What is the, what kind of vehicle is being used? Because it's not only the amount of traffic on the street and the wear and tear on that, but part of the report talks about greenhouse gases and mass transit, et cetera. So how do you, did I miss something? Am I on the right track? How, how would you change a vehicle mile to the quality of the vehicle mile?
That's a great question. If I, if my answer is, you know, really the quality of the B M T isn't addressed as part of S B seven forty-three. All B M T is seen the same, but your point is an excellent point. And we're well aware, because even when you look at a speed curve, we know that vehicles going very slowly and very fast are our worst emitters. So the congestion actually does play into this question, but that's not the way the act was, was, was constructed. And it's also worth thinking or understanding that when the state did this, part of the reason they arrived at B M T is they looked out to the future and they, and, and the, we talked about the fact that you use a model to look out to the future. And we look at, we look at vehicle mix. So as part of vehicle mix, we do make some assumptions about how many electric cars or the improvements of technology that will reduce emissions, and those are kind of baked into the state's plan. And even when they bake in all that, all that good technology, we're still coming up short to where we need to be. So that's why B M T got added to the, added to the discussion. But unfortunately, again, this question comes up often, the folks are like, well, shouldn't electric vehicles be excluded? And while I see that, that, I can really understand where folks are coming from when they say that that's not the way that it's been constructed. And, and part of the answer as well, we're seeking also to have a broader sense of improving some land use issues. You know, promoting transit and if there's a little bit of livability or it's probably baked into S B seven forty-three as well.
Okay. Shall we go to the public now? Any more questions? And we can continue this discussion. All right.
Can we, can we stop the question slides so we can have a full screen view?
Yes, we, we can certainly do that. I can add, I don't know if I can kick Mr. Schmidt out. There we go.
There you go. That's great. I just want to see everybody.
Yep, no, good to, good to see you all. And let's see if we have anyone in the public who would like to speak on this item. We've had the Chiron up for quite a while and it doesn't look like we have any hands raised at this time, Eric Robertson.
Okay, good for that information. Thank you. Back to the council, are we ready to move on it? More discussion questions? Councilmember Tyler?
I just like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second. Second. A motion and a second by Councilmember Allen. More discussion?
I did just kind of have a follow up and I, I don't have the, the thought fully realized, but there was this discussion during the presentation about retail. And we've been having this conversation a lot on the council regarding kind of parking and making sure that, you know, folks in the community are accessible to to retail facilities within, within the community. And I'm just wondering how, because it was alluded to in the presentation, how if we kind of address this vehicle miles traveled conversation here, that it can really help support getting folks to businesses. And so I was wondering if you can just describe that a little bit further. Reduce the amount of vehicle miles traveled, we get, we reduce the amount of vehicles on the road. And maybe we create more housing in downtown, let's say, this is a good thing for our businesses, right?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So B M T, the policy that's in front of me today, it's separate from our parking requirements. So we're not proposing to change our parking requirements. But like you said, Tyler, our downtown does allow for no parking required for commercial uses. And so for example, if there's a new project that wants to locate in downtown, it's downtown is a great location for a project because it's next to the Transit Plaza, next to the Jazz A and B lines, which are high quality transit by definition. And so by having that transit line next, next door, a project may qualify for a no significant impact under B M T. So that encourages, like Mike said, infill development, where there's already a lot of density and where maybe the automobile is not required to, to travel.
No, perfect. That, that answers it. Thank you, Fernanda.
Councilmember Allen?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to kind of, my comment is, as I understand it, I think this is going to be positive for our city. I think in a lot of ways, we already are really aligned with this philosophically. This is going to promote infill versus sprawl. That's what we want. We want to see infill and development in the existing footprint of the city. It promotes transit, it promotes affordable housing, it promotes mixed use, it promotes multimodal transportation, it promotes redevelopment. So it seems to me, and it also promotes really what our city is, which is a full service community, right? We have jobs, we have doctors' offices, dental offices, churches, schools, recreation, all kinds of different businesses as well as homes. So I mean, as opposed to a bedroom community where people have to drive everywhere to do everything, you can live in the city of Monterey and really do most everything that you need or want to do. So anyway, I, I, I think this is going to be a good thing for us. It's new, it's, it's a little different, but I, but I'm hopeful that this will actually be good for us. And it actually, I think aligns with our city council's philosophy of the kind of city we want.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. Okay, so Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to try and make this as brief as I can. Thank you for the presentation. It's helpful. I would encourage anybody who is watching and wants to know a little bit more about the state legislative priorities for T A M Z. Because a lot of what we talk about tonight aligns very well with the state priorities that we set. So the next meeting of T A M Z is the, T A M Z is the 24th of March. And we'll be approving of our 2021 legislative program, state and federal priorities. And a couple of these priorities, I'm just going to go through briefly a couple that relate to tonight's in the transportation piece. Now granted, this is Monterey County Transportation Authority, but directly relates to what we're doing tonight. Item two is pursue competitive grant or bond funding for highway safety, traffic congestion relief, trade corridors, passenger rail, public transportation, infrastructure resiliency and bicycle pedestrian routes for Monterey County. Three, promote jobs, housing balance and alternative transportation modes as ways to reduce vehicles, vehicles mild, miles traveled. So we've been talking about the vehicles mile trap, miles traveled as the doctrine that ultimately may result in a new way of vehicle fees being assessed. So we don't know where the state's going to go, but part of what T A M Z's legislative lobbyist does for us is keep track of what's happening. But alternatives such as via funding, reduce transit fares while maintaining statewide equity between urban and rural areas. So not so much for Monterey, but the county of Monterey has a problem with vehicles, vehicle miles traveled if it's not applied equitably because of the distances of our travel through our urban and rural communities. South County King City, all the way to going to a job in Salinas or Monterey, makes it very difficult and inequitable on travel. So not everybody can afford an electric car just yet. So that's one of the concerns we have at T A M Z. And the last one I'll point out is explore replacement funding mechanisms for transportation investments such as a pay by the mile user fee, public private partnerships, vehicle registration fee or wholesale energy taxes that are equitable to disadvantaged and rural areas. So a lot of what we are doing tonight aligns with the legislative priorities for the Transportation Authority of Monterey County. And I just wanted to relate that the, there's more to come on how we pay for our registration of vehicles in the future. We don't know what the model will be, but we know it's going to be something akin to looking at new standards of vehicle miles traveled and adjusting the electric cars that are paying a less fee than a gas operated vehicle. And then, of course, we have the challenge of transportation that requires more energy than a battery truck can provide right now. So come back in 20 years and see where we're at. So things are changing, that's for sure. But I encourage you all to look at the state and federal priorities that's listed on the website for T A M Z.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. All right, roll call, please. We have a motion and a second to pass the resolution to adopt this new standard for Sequo.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hafa?
Yes.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Robertson?
Yes, as always, a really excellent discussion. Our next item is to receive the city manager's memorandum on city staff work program and his suggestion to schedule a mid-year workshop or, let me see, I'll find it here. A mid-year workshop on the city's vision, mission and strategic initiatives. So we're not really going to be talking about the city's vision, mission and strategic initiatives and work plan tonight. It's really to find out the process, the steps that will get us to our workshop so we can really get into depth at that time. So back to you, Hans.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please allow me to share my screen with you. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. As you, as you pointed out, this is basically a work product that derived from talking to the council on several occasions about the city staff work program. And it kind of lines up also with the two previous items that were presented to you, Ambac, and our greenhouse gas emissions and SB seven forty-three and the vehicle miles traveled. Because what, what I think this council can accomplish also in a possible mid-year city council workshop is to, to discuss part of that climate change agenda that regularly comes up from you, the council, as part to include that into our vision for the city of Monterey. And from there, taking it down to strategic initiatives and several programs. As I pointed out to you, we, we had several workshops over the past year, actually, with the exception of one quarter, every quarter, we, we talked about the work program. The last one we had was two sittings in a row in January twenty-one. And we talked about the programs. And you may recall that we had over hundred seventy different work programs there. We tried to make sense out of that. And here's some of the feedback that, that I wrote down that came from you, the council. Well, the program is, is, is pretty comprehensive, but what is actually the vision for our city? And you, you asked me also, what are the tasks that, that we should implement to accomplish our vision, the city council's vision? How do we get there? How do we achieve that session, that vision? And how do we pay for it? What are the long-term goals that we should define for our community or that we envision for our community? How can you tell a city manager how we are progressing on those priorities? So what kind of metrics do you have for us so that we can help you manage our priorities, city manager? How can staff periodically update council on that progress? Should it be every six months? Should it be every nine months? Should it be twelve months, et cetera? We, we don't address in the city vision right now, climate change. We don't, we're not talking about wildfire and the danger. Not talking about sea level rise. We're not talking about social justice. Add to that equity, add to that diversity, add to that inclusiveness. And another idea that was brought forward is we need to have a dashboard, maybe, that, that provides an overview who we are and on what path we are and how we are progressing. And last but not least, one council member pointed out, this is a very one dimensional work plan that you show us, city manager and city staff. What are the other layers? How do we get to those layers? And so when, when, when I was reflecting over all those good and well- meant questions and statements, of course, this created another work program for us to basically figure out. To basically, to basically figure out, okay, how can I now satisfy the council members? And what came to mind was an exercise that, that I participated in a while back, I believe it was in 2010, when, when the council at that time retreated into the conference center there and locked the door behind themselves and, and really under the, the, the guidance of a facilitator, worked out the, the, the mission and vision and strategic initiatives that they felt unnecessary for, for their work. So my, my recommendation is to, to structure something like that as well sometime for mid 2021. It would help us very much to address all those questions. It would help us also to find the correct hierarchy for all the work programs that we have presented to you. I really ask your patience for a full day workshop on that one. It cannot be dealt within two hours or three hours. It really requires us to, to, to work together and work with, with, with those facilitators there that are actually experts in bringing city councils together. I remember in 2010, the city council at that time needed also a little bit of group therapy. And that was part of the program to, to, to teach the council at that time how to work together. And those folks that, that are organizing that are, like I said, very much qualified to, to, to put this all together, listen to you, write it all down and bring back a product that you will have a chance together with us to review. And then probably, and that's highly likely, we might need a second full day or second half day or so to review and approve the outcomes from the first meeting because it needs to be fine tuned before you then take this out to the community and show that to the community. So my, my, my recommendation is number one, take a look at what I wrote in the memorandum, and I'm sure you did this already, but what I basically did was I mirrored what we had written as, what we still have on the books as our vision, mission, mission and value drivers. And I have mirrored that against those hundred seventy program items that we brought forward to you just to give you an insight how this might work. Of course, this is, is not the product. It is just basically, I want to call it an appetizer for you to see what, what the end outcome might be. It's important, I think, after we had several of those work program sessions, that, that we modernize our, our mission statement. It needs to be updated because as we all know, society has developed rapidly. We, we were, we are forced with, with many challenges. And I would just spontaneously throw in also public because that's probably also another element that, that we learned the tough way over the past twelve months. But it will help us to have a joint vision that we can then relate to. And it will help you also when we are bringing forward agenda reports. Like tonight, we brought you SB seven forty-three forward. We talked about greenhouse gas emissions. And if it's part of your vision to, to, to deal with climate change on a local level, if it's part of that mission also, you will see the relevance of those programs and everyone will see the relevance of those programs. And I actually foresee that annually, if, if Councilmember Williamson lets me get away with every twelve month instead of every three, I can see that annually, we can provide you with, with a very structured substantial update of the progress we then have made on the various levels. Last but not least, what I propose is also that our office, just the city manager's office, kind of gauges the field. This is, is not a large scale public relations campaign or public outreach campaign where we would have multiple, multiple listening sessions. But it's, it's very, because last but not least, it will be the vision of the council. And you all are elected on your specific platforms and you all are connected to your particular group of constituents. So I dare not say to tell you what your vision is, but what is important, I believe, also is to kind of hear what the community also identifies as issues that are important for them. And that's is what, what I would commit to find out in the timeframe between April and June. And we will provide you also prior to that workshop, hopefully, that you will allow us to schedule for July. Prior to that, we will provide you with an agenda report and an update of what we have learned. And with that, also, of course, we'll invite the public also to, to comment on what we have summarized out of that. So I think, council, this is actually my last slide, if I remember correctly. This is, is my, my, my suggestion to you to, to commit to that. And I, I really think that a lot of clarity can be derived out of that process. And I, I think that at the end of 2021, we, we might actually officially have an updated vision, an updated mission, and updated value drivers. And with that, if you have any questions, please fire away.
All right. Any questions before we go to the public? All right. And we'll see any we might have. And when we come back, we'll come to some consensus. This isn't an action item as listed, but we certainly can come to a consensus with respect to Hans' excellent report and recommendation. So now, do we have any folks that want to share with us?
We do not. Mayor Livingston?
All right. Then I'll close that part of the hearing and come back to the council. Hans, what do you need to hear from us that, that we're in concurrence? Let's go ahead and schedule.
Yes, that would be awesome. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It would be great if you'd just say, yes, Hans, what a great idea. We'll do it.
I'll, I'll say that if you take the sharing screen down so we can see everybody.
Okay, I'll try that. Nat, can you take it down? There you go. I did it.
There you go. Okay. Yeah, I don't know how. Sorry.
Okay, Alan, you have a, a thought?
Yeah, I think it looks great. I did. So I want to clarify. So Hans, are you suggesting you, you would identify a facilitator then to help us with this?
Yes, sir. And, and what I would ask you also to do is I believe some of you have done that. I know Councilmember Albert went, went out at the Marina landfill or the Marina Waste Management District and had a facilitator there. You might have experience like that on your various boards. And if you have great recommendations, please let us know as well who you feel has done a great job working with the boards you belong to. But we would, we would basically select and they would, in all likelihood, pre-meet with you individually and, and hear you, hear your, your preferences, et cetera, as well.
Okay, great. I think that's a good idea. My, my suggestion or my input, I guess, is I don't think this board needs to spend time talking about how to work together. I've been on boards that did, and we had to spend a lot of time doing that, and it was important. I think this council and, and, and management worked on a weekend. Or possibly I can do it in the summer. I don't know how that works for Tyler. But for me, I'm, I'm willing to, I could do it on a Friday, probably. Saturday, Sunday's better. So that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Right. I hear that. Dan, you were going to say something. Dan, have you done this process once or twice in your career?
Just a couple. Along with Alan, I'm sure. I just wanted to mention a dovetail on what Alan said about the facilitator. I think as a group, we don't need a mediator. I think that we, we need more of a person that, we like to talk, folks. And so since we like to talk, we get, we get out of, out of focus on, on areas. And I think that person, whenever you look for that facilitator, I think a person has to be able to tell us, okay, enough on that. Let's move on to something else. And I think that's very important with this group because I don't think it would be a problem finding somebody. It's just finding that right facilitator that will be able to move us along.
Okay, currently with, go ahead, Councilmember Tyler.
Go ahead. Good, Mayor. I, I, I lost my thought trying to engage in what you were about to say.
All right. I have that effect on people. And the Monterey Peninsula Regional Water District, Water Management District is actually doing a strategic plan as we speak. We did a three-hour session. What was it? Sometime last week? I'm, I'm starting to blur my meetings. We're going to meet again on March twenty-sixth. Two, three-hour sessions. And it was so interesting. The first, very, very worthwhile, and the board works extremely well together along with the staff. I'll tell you, I haven't been on the Water Management District Board very long, but I'm very impressed, especially by the new electeds. But the point there was it took the first three hours just to kind of lay out the current information before we even got to making suggestions and recommendations and changes. So it, it is a process. And I, Hans, if you can contact Mr. Stolt, I think our facilitator is, I want to say Richard Garcia. He's well experienced in, in this, and I find him to be really good. He's easy to talk to. He did talk, talk to each director and asked, got input from them. So he came in with recommendations. And so that, that would be good. Yeah. So we're, we're looking, it sounds good. Okay, my rambling helped Tyler remember what we were talking about.
No, I'm just kidding. So one of the things I had brought up in January, when we were meeting, was there were, there were several things, I think, in the management of the relationship with, with us as council members with the city. I think that there, there is benefit in, in us focusing on that, right? So I think that there's benefit in having this maybe larger conversation about the work plan and how we interact with staff. But then maybe more specifically, there's like a segment of it where we're looking at, you know, just clarifying what it means to, for an example, how much is allocated per, for, for council member? I know that you, Hans, you and I have talked about this in private, and it was kind of like a more of a, a flexible thing that we can work with. But I think having clear guardrails so that it's clear about, you know, each council member gets a certain amount of funding so that they can go out to, go on to conferences or what have you. So that it's clear and, and there's no room for ambiguity or that, that somebody's getting more benefit than the other. So things like that, I think, would, would be a helpful conversation for us to have. Dan, I see your eyebrows kind of frowning.
I'm trying to wrap myself around what you were saying. That's all. I'm, you know, single, single cell brain.
I'm trying to remember the last conference anybody went to. Exactly. Yeah.
You can go to, we'll fund as many Zoom conferences as you want to go to.
You heard it here first, folks.
Yeah. Please, Councilmember Ed?
Yeah, I concur with everybody else's comments. I think it's a, a great idea. Long overdue, but it's not that this council is struggling with relationships or communications or workflow. It, I think, I, I concur, we should be able to get to work relatively quickly after the first cup of coffee and, and bagel. But I think the, the vision statement, existing value drivers needs a lot of work and that will be fun to go through. Certainly, the, the public needs to participate in some, some manner where we, we absolutely have the, the input from our community. And, and also, I think that we've, we've traveled together this last year with some very valuable experience. And so we shouldn't throw that away. We should, right now, have an opportunity where we look forward to analyzing and examining the best practices that now, aside from COVID, what did we learn and how do we use that? And how does that play into describing who we are as a council and an organization? And so, yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of doing it. One suggestion I would have is certainly, you know, scope the world and see who you choose, Hans. You know us better than we know each other. Because part of your job is you analyze us and you understand us. And we also, we speak with you very frequently and give you the input from what we hear about in our community. It's hard to do eight hours to keep some people in the game participating. So I would offer that if it worked, maybe it's a four hours on Friday afternoon and a follow-up on Saturday. So congrue it together. You get eight hours, but you also get, the, the facilitator gets to push a lot on the first session. And then you sleep and we come back. The second four-hour segment is much more productive. So however they can do it, but I think I'm, I'm game for eight hours, twelve hours. But I think if it's spread out to accommodate everybody, we can have some very valuable time together.
And I see a lot of nodding heads. That's really a good idea. An eight-hour shot would, would be too much for me, frankly. I like that.
Yeah. And I think we do it, we do it at night so that Tyler and Alan can work during the day and then we'll work at night.
Can I ask, how many of the staff, because we've had this before, where all staff has been there? What, what is the recommendation for how many staff members will be at this? Would it be all the department's heads again? Or would it just be the council? Because I know a Saturday might be a little tough for some staff members.
Yeah, I, I don't have a recommendation for that yet. Councilmember Albert, that, that's a. I I don't have a recommendation for that yet. Councilmember Oliver, that that's an excellent question. I I I think it has value to have the department heads there as as somebody who can, as a group that provides feedback and answer questions. I cannot tell you that right now, but but I I'm I'm very sure that we will have department head staff members attending there to to a degree as well.
I just want to make make a point about Saturday.
Yes, I got the points.
Yeah, and and I think that the big piece of this is, as you interview the facilitator candidate, certainly you're taking their input. And they may have a methodology that has compartmentalized this for a time on, say, a Friday afternoon for staff, and then maybe Saturday is is not. So I think balancing that in with whatever their methodology is or their 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 doctrine is going to use and diagnostic, they may even give us an assessment. Who knows?
Very good point, Ed.
And if I just can say, the example I gave about the excellent facilitators that can also do some sort of group therapy was an example that does not apply to this group of council members. I just want to state this for the record. I just wanted to say that when we did this.
It depends on how the first hour goes.
Absolutely.
Depends on if there's coffee.
Yes.
And bagels.
If the coffee is good, we're we're going to be okay.
That's good. Let let me just wrap this up with a direct question is, how many hours, considering the workload of getting people back to work, opening the sports center, the conference center, getting everyone vaccinated, a hundred and seventy work programs going on? Is this something that that you're going to be able, you and your able staff are going to be able to handle? You're probably thinking about it all the time. It's not like you have to sit down and reinvent the wheel. But I I just want to make sure we're not overloading an our already overloaded staff.
So you you saw that we put in the word CMO office will do that. That's an active program of Nat and myself that we will handle internally. And it will not affect department heads more than just asking their input at at regular scheduled meetings. And then take it to take it to that level. So that's why we intentionally wrote CMO's office, and by that we mean CMO's office.
Well, I want you to take.
And we'll get it done, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I want you to take care of the CMO's office, too.
Yes, and we'll get it done. But this is, it's very important for us, for for us as the council and the city manager's office.
Well, I think you've gotten the concurrence consensus and buy in and direction, and I and I think enthusiasm, too. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and look forward.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, thank you. So let's go ahead with your update on the COVID nineteen response efforts, please, Hans, and we'll go to council comments and we'll.
Let me share my screen again, if I may. Okay, you see that, right?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few slides prepared for tonight. Of course, a couple of days ago, the Monterey specific one year anniversary passed. We issued the declaration of emergency effective two thirteen twenty twenty. And we we started a mini campaign here that is based on City of Monterey remembers. And some of you, the council members, were also participating in that campaign. We created a Tree of Hearts at Friendly Plaza. We had a community tree planting last week, Tuesday in the rain, where we planted three blossoming cherry trees at the recreation trail. They are kind of in the adjacent to the foam lighthouse triangle at that part of the recreation trail. Colton Hall is lit up in gold, golden colors to honor all the healthcare workers and the COVID nineteen fatalities. And we, our administrative assistant and media specialist Eric Palmer created a very well received video tribute. Here, here's a photo of the tree in front of on Friendly Plaza. It has over five hundred different hearts. And here are some of the messages that that are being added on a daily basis. And a lot of folks have expressed individually also their appreciation that there is a chance for them to to remember their loved ones or to be grateful for the healthcare workers. In this case, it is a thank you mental healthcare workers, or a message like less hate, more love, somebody remembers their grandma. And some another person is forever grateful, but we also found other names on on the hearts, et cetera. So that has been very well received. This is a photo of the tree planting, as I said last week. Tuesday morning, you see the mayor Clyde on the right hand side there with with part of our parks crew there. And these will be three cherry trees, and cherry trees start blossoming in March, April. So they will, with their blossoms, remind us of this pandemic and when the pandemic started. We also envisioned this could be maybe one day a site that the council wants to put a plaque there as a potential memorial. Or maybe you you find a different site, but we we found that site very attractive for those three cherry trees. And this is a picture of of Colton Hall illuminated with gold filters for our, for the lights that we installed probably five years ago. Here's a quick, here's the video, and trust me, I will not play that video for you, but it's it's it highlights very much the past year and what we went through here in the city of Monterey. Now, the good news today that reached us today was was that the county of Monterey moved, like so many other counties now, from the purple tier into the red tier. And this is the latest update from the state of California. You see basically not too many purple tier counties left. And Monterey is actually very, very close to to the next tier already. Of course, there's always the one or the other metric that needs to come down, but we are actually closer to the next tier than than it might appear, even after we just went into red. But what does it mean? Moving from red to from purple to red, it means the gyms, the fitness centers can open and have indoors an operation at ten percent capacity or hundred people, whatever is comes first. Restaurants are allowed for indoor dining at a twenty five percent capacity or hundred people, whatever comes first. Movie theaters at twenty five percent or hundred people. We understand that our movie theater at Del Monte Shopping Center Cinemark is very, very actively pursuing to reopen soonest. Retail stores can open at fifty percent capacity, grocery stores at hundred percent capacity. And relevant for us, since we don't have a zoo, but an aquarium, we are allowed to open the aquarium at twenty five percent capacity. And my understanding is that the aquarium is working hard to do that. They are planning of having a reservation based system. And that also restrict people then based on in their time inside the aquarium so that a lot of people can come in and enjoy the aquarium. There will be a reservation based system with time slots for the aquarium, but they are working on this right now. Excuse me. What what are we doing in the city? We are actively working on trying to open the sports center. We have started calling former staff members to come back to the sports center. And now, at the at the present time, we can only bring back ten percent of of customers. And our experience in in June was when we had the sports center open, that we had some peak times where we had twenty, twenty five folks in the in the sports center. But it will not be at ten percent that the sports center will be completely staff. So in the beginning, we were, we are looking mainly to bring part time positions on board to to be compliant with the ongoing restrictions and also with the customer demand that we expect will be very, very slowly coming back to us. We we are planning to bring back our aquatics coordinator, that that was a full time position that we had to lay off last year. We we are bringing that position back full time. We expect that the swim gym will be opening soon. Right now, we can allow drowning prevention swimming lessons there. And that's a, that's a very wide expression to be used. Drowning prevention is probably anything that that you do when when you try to stay afloat. So we will try to work with those rules a little bit to allow the swim gym to open because we understand that a lot of folks are very interested in getting back into the swimming lanes. Our library will remain in the current sidewalk service status for right now. And we'll continue to offer free Wi-Fi outside and in the parking lot. Recreation programming, we are running right now three preschool programs. As you know, last week, we opened up also the ball fields, and we are issuing ball fields, sport fields and volleyball court permits. The basketball is is not allowed under state guidance yet, so we cannot put the basketball rings back on rims back on on the best basketball courts. So that that is a question that we have been asked a few times over the past days. When when do you open up the basketball court again? We are not allowed right now by this date to open that context for basketball. And then we are, we have started planning for for the sports league. We brought another employee back on into our team. She she is actively supporting us to to plan as a full time employee again. She's actively supporting us to help us for the sports league and summer camps. And unfortunately, we we had to cancel our idea to open Camp Kinzabe. And there are various issues with Camp Kinzabe. One of them is is other fire scars have actually also destroyed a bunch of the trails that are used during Camp Kinzabe. And for that very reason, it's it just became too difficult to to plan a camp if you really don't have the the elements that we always had to have a successful camp. But we will have day camps and probably also some sort of whispering pine camps. So we we are working also slowly into the direction of opening more and more up as we are allowed, permitted to do so. Today was a great day for for a lot of folks. Our Monterey Fire Department is an established vaccination agency, as I've stated to you a few times before. But today, we organized together with Monterey Police Department and Monterey Fire Department vaccinations of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine for homeless folks. This was the focus today. We we received last week, Monday, five hundred doses of Johnson and Johnson. And it was shared with us the expectation that this one shot only vaccine should be given to those folks that are most vulnerable, the homeless populations. And we 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 worked through the Monterey Police Department, through their connections, through MDOT, the the multidisciplinary outreach team that the Monterey PD established two, three years ago. And we we knew where the homeless were, we knew how to communicate with the bulk, with with the with the majority of them. In the morning, we we hosted the homeless clinic at Gathering for Women. And frankly, we we vaccinated there over one hundred twenty folks that came to that clinic at Gathering for Women. And those numbers that that I share with you tonight are very surprising to us. We estimated initially maybe forty to sixty folks at Gathering for Women this morning, under twenty vaccinations there. And then the afternoon, and KSPW reported about that as well, we partnered up with the seaside administration and the seaside city manager and seaside fire. And we brought the the vaccines out to Fort Ord where there was another subgroup of of homeless assembled. Number one, there is an RV parking lot that that seaside is providing for homeless folks, but there were also a lot of other folks coming. And the last what I heard from our police, from our fire chief was that in total today, we we administered around three hundred vaccination of the five hundred shots of Johnson and Johnson. And so we we will continue to to plan for homelessness vaccination clinics. And we still have two hundred shots of Johnson and Johnson available. And we really, really have taken this to heart. And I I count this today as a, I think, a very rewarding experience for all those that have planned that and tried to figure out what is the best way to reach as many homeless folks than we can get. As you know, they are all spread out throughout the 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 peninsula. But the word of mouth was spreading. We were notifying a great deal of homeless service providers who then in return spread the word, and today was a great success. Last but not least, we also have Moderna received six hundred doses of Moderna. And those doses are being administered according to the tier structure also to disaster service workers. And again, City of Monterey is is the vaccination agency. But we are sharing the vaccinations with the cities of Carmel, Pacific Grove, Cent City, the Monterey Airport District, but also we reached out to Monterey Salinas Transit and trying to help them with their with their vaccination efforts for the bus drivers. I want to thank here all the HR departments that are working with us. That's not just the Monterey HR department, but all cities and agencies, HR department, our IT department. Because as you know, there's always a setup required for registration of the vaccinated folks. And last but not least, a big, big thank you goes to the inoculators, the Monterey Fire Department. And that's my COVID update for today, council.
Well, that was very inspiring and illuminating. Thanks to you, Hans, and the entire city staff. I I think the city of Monterey has really been a role model in in how to deal with the pandemic. And so we thank you for that. Any public comment, Nat, on this?
We do have one hand raised, and it will be Kevin Dayton. Kevin, welcome.
Thank you, Nat. Hello, Mayor and City Council.
Hi, Kevin.
Government Affairs Liaison for Monterey Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to first say, I I monitor about two hundred California local agendas every week. And the city of Monterey from the beginning has been outstanding in its response to COVID nineteen. For a city of twenty eight thousand people, you outclassed cities that have four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand people, and you're still doing that now. So give yourselves credit for that. I think, Hans, you were the right person at the right time to really take the lead as the top staffer in the city. And you've done an excellent job on that. One thing I'll mention here is every day I get an email, the City of Monterey update. I just got number two twenty three about COVID nineteen. Those are great. You got a little information every day about what's going on. And sometimes there is a graphics that you can put out on social media. So make sure you add that to the list, too. The Business Action and Economic Recovery Team that was created with the chamber a year ago. The chamber is still doing all this activities related to those themes. We've reduced our our meetings to once a week with staff, but those continue to be useful. I can tell you that one thing that our members have been excited about and hope to continue is the outdoor dining and retail. One thing that's coming up, and I'll let Mayor Roberson know about this, the ordinance one sixty eight that the water district had to give outdoor dining and exemption from some of the water restrictions.
Okay.
It'd be great to see that extended for another year. And in the long run, I I, we're going to talk about this at our Government Affairs Committee meeting of the chamber on Monday. But I I'm guessing that the chamber is going to say the outdoor dining and the opportunities the outside have been enjoyed by businesses and customers. And if there's any way to have this continue without being too intrusive on the live. And if there's any way to have this continue without being too intrusive on the lives of residents, I think that would be very well received. I think that was one of the positive things we saw happen out of this was the opportunity for the outdoor dining. People really seem to enjoy it in general. So with that, all, all in my comments. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. We always appreciate you calling in and no other items, or no other items, no other public comments on Hans's update tonight.
All right. Any council comments, questions, or shall we move on to council comments? Council member Alan?
I'm sorry. No, I had a council comment when we get to that.
Okay. Why don't we just go ahead?
Mayor, real quick, and just in a response to, to Kevin, if he's aware of the, of the dead, the date that the outdoor dining ordinance that we had ends? What was the date that we had identified for that?
He was, he was not, he was not talking about that. Our outdoor dining permits expire next year, October 1st. But he was referencing the permit that the water district gave to, to outdoor dining with respect to, to water allocations. And that, that was his appeal to, to the mayor to ask the water district to extend that.
Right.
And I, I don't know what, what that limit is in, in, for that resolution 168, I think, is what he said. I, I don't know that.
But, you know, I, I've just been on the board here a couple of months, but I'll find out. Because one of the things historically, the way the water district has allocated water was by restaurant seats. And so they actually would limit the restaurant, how many seats they could have according to how many water credits they had. So we'll have to see if this was a, a special permission from the sheltering-in-place COVID-19 challenge, or if it is something that can be extended. So I'll find out. I'll make a note and we'll see. Okay, Alan, start us off, please, with council member comments.
Um, yeah. So I wanted to, oh, great, Nat. Thank you so much. So I serve representing the city and Community Human Services. And as you know, CHS, Community Human Services, in partnership with Gathering for Women, opened the peninsula's homeless shelter for women and families in February. Coming up in, looks like four days, there's going to be a fundraiser and also a celebration. Essentially, it's kind of a virtual celebration of the grand opening of Casa de Noche Buena, which is the shelter. So if folks would like to participate in that, you can sign up here. And the, the event is going to be March 21st from 5:30 to 6:30. It's going to be a virtual event, so you do need to sign up in advance. And, and there's also going to be entertainment. There will be jazz, a jazz performance by Emmy Brown and Amina Figueroa. And your, any tax deductible donations towards this event or the shelter, they are tax deductible and would be very helpful in terms of our ongoing operations and to be able to support the ongoing operations. So thanks for sharing that.
Right, thanks.
Alan, can you send us that link?
I will send you that link. Yep.
Yeah, I've already signed up for it. It's really easy and we'll see everybody there. Good. Council member Tyler, any council comments tonight?
Well, I just wanted to share that I'm wearing my green for St. Patrick's Day tomorrow. So I kind of wanted to give everybody a reminder. It's a day I, I don't really often forget because it's also my grandma's birthday. So I look forward to that, but happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody.
Oh, thank you. Council member Dan?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank, even though Hans brought it up, but as, as a part of MST and, and a board chair, on, on behalf of MST, thank you very much, City of Monterey, for vaccinating our MST drivers. Even though the county finally agreed that, that they were essential workers, we couldn't find any vaccinations. So vaccines, and so Hans made a call to our, our, our director and, and we got some of it taken care of. And I really appreciate that, City of Monterey, and I know MST does too. I did mention in November and in January about the method of agendizing items. So if I could just remind the staff that if we can look at it in a, some type of workshop at the end of the month, we can just bring it up for a short, quick conversation on how we agendize items. And then the last comment is, I did attend the Hang, Hang a Heart on the Magnolia Tree. And I, I highly recommend that people go down and, and sign one of those hearts because there's quite a few of them still available. And, and to thank all the essential workers and that, that helped in the COVID-19. So those are my three comments.
Okay. Thank you. Council member Ed?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, congratulations to the community and to Monterey County for what you've all achieved. So it's a significant move to move from purple to red. And so it's one major step, so many more. So keep it up and thanks for all your hard work and for those that have been out there doing the education and providing the nursing and medical responses to COVID. So awesome news that we're getting better. Quick comments, last week, we had Legislative Day where Tamsi and four other counties come together through a coalition. And we had about five and a half hours on the Zoom meeting where we rolled through with a variety of assembly members and senators. And our time was with Robert Rebus, that covers part of Salinas and the, and the north area in the Sanikers, Anna Caballero, former mayor of Salinas, state senator, also Assemblyman Mark Stone, and followed up with John Laird, our new senator. So we had specific asks on behalf of Tamsi. And each of the areas, San Luis Obispo, Santa Cruz, Monterey, San Bernardino, and Santa Barbara was the coalition. So we had a very productive day. From Monterey County, our ask to be appropriate, Assembly members and senators was assisting or saying thank you very first for the legislation for 156 to get the SEQA with special legislation, but also asking for some additional funding. Recognition of how important Highway 1 is, looking for additional funding for 101 improvements and explaining how important it is from Monterey County. Also, assistance will be needed for Highway 68 as we proceed with that plan. And we talked tonight about getting people out of cars and having vehicle miles traveled being lessened. And it's not about expanding lanes and it's about looking for opportunities to relieve congestion and move people faster to where they need to go. So the roundabouts are a raving success for us. And we're looking at 68 to do some of the same work with that. And I shared with the assembly members and the senator the success of 2016 for Monterey County with Measure X for self-help. Significant results. And just this next year, for the local transportation funds that are apportioned, 908,000 comes to Transportation Authority and 19 million comes to all of the different agencies in Monterey County. The city of Monterey is expected to get 1.171. It may be more depending on how the tax dollars roll in. So that's a 30-year legislation that, that funds major projects to the cities and the county. And also indicating at the legislation day, the benefits that the Monterey County or the Monterey City has reaped from the measurement of Measure P and following on with Measure S to get our roads fixed. So they were attentive and listened and we're in a great shape because they are drafting a legislation specifically to modify the Brown Act so we can continue having a better access to the community. There's about 15 different pieces of legislation that'll get consolidated to reforming of the Brown Act. And also Anna has offered some broadband legislation that's much needed in parts of Monterey County. So with that, I'll make the last plug. I too am wearing some green tomorrow with St. Patty's Day and I'm a little bit Irish. And so it's, it's a fun day. So let's, let's make sure we plug. My Canary Row Rotary is providing traditional St. Patty's Day dinner. There's still time to register tonight at Canary Row Rotary. And it's a drive-through. Be safe. Pick up a meal tomorrow night. And we'll be there handing out some corned beef and hash in honor of St. Patty's Day. So congratulations for those of you that celebrate the Irish Day.
Thank you. That's really good. I, I've, I have sent to the city council group a summary of our Water Management District Board meeting of March 15th. Hope you all got it. And I'll just hit the, the bullets very quickly. It was a two-hour meeting, lots of technical stuff. But it was interesting to me that in the year 2000, water demand in the district was 15,000 acre feet. For the last three or four years, it's been 9,500, which is a reduction of 5,500 acre feet through conservation in the district, which is really quite amazing. Part of our discussion had to do with Tyler's Board, Monterey One Water, because the Water Management District is a partner with Monterey One Water on the pure water, the recycling. And so 300 acre feet of wastewater is being recycled per month, times 12. So the 3,500 acre feet per year is meeting its target. Something near and dear to all of us, the district has sent a letter to the State Water Resources Control Board asking for an allotment of 75 acre feet for affordable housing. This requires relief from Condition 2, and Condition 2 basically prohibits newer increase water service. So this is a special ask and I would imagine other cities may join in, in support. We looked at our budget and it was fine. And lastly, there was a delay in the certification of the final EIR for Pure Water Monterey, Pure One Water. There it is. Pure Water Monterey. That's it. The wastewater expansion. And because it was delayed, there has to update the EIR, of course. And so the Water Management District contributes three-fourths of that money. So there will be allotted $181,000 towards that effort. And thinking that it may be on your agenda, Tyler, for April or May to take another look at the environmental impact report and hopefully get a certification. So that, that's my report from the, briefly from the district board meeting that I wanted to share early for anyone watching as well as the council. So we'll go ahead to Hans. Any final words?
No, no final word from me. And I, I recognize this obsession with St. Patrick's Day still as a strange feeling for certain Americans.
Oh, you know what's, and that didn't, I, I wanted to mention one other thing. And it's, I've got two computers going here. Let me see if I can find it. At our last board meeting, Alvin Andrews, Alan, come on, Edwards, asked that. And you want me to do an eight-hour workshop? Anyway, Alvin asked, Edwards asked if the mayors would write a letter in support of the water district. The water district had written the State Water Resources Control Board asking for relief on the milestone penalty that came down last October. It was a 1,000 acre feet penalty. And the point of the letter was that because of factors out of the CalAM and other applicants' control, that it was felt that there should be relief on the milestone. Quoting from a letter from the Pebble Beach Company, "The material delays caused by both the Coastal Commission staff and by order of the Monterey Superior Court were clearly and undeniably beyond CalAM's and other applicants' control." So the point being made there was four mayors signed on, Dave Potter of Carmel, Allison Kerr of Delray Oaks, Ian Oldsby of Seaside and myself. So we sent that letter in support of seeing if we could get some relief and at least a hearing to talk about why are you penalizing ultimately us for things that are totally out of our control? So I wanted to let you know, we did that as mayors, very clearly as mayors, not representing our city councils. So I remembered. All right. If, unless there's nothing else, we will leave with, yes, Ed, unmute and...
Sorry, had to get the mute off. Comment for Hans. I know he's sort of sad because he doesn't have a reason to celebrate tomorrow. So just pretend this is Oktoberfest tomorrow night. And so you can find a reason to celebrate green.
It will be Hans McUsler tomorrow night.
There you go. There you go. Okay. Well, then, in that case, we'll adjourn in with acknowledgement to Hans. Who is he again? McUsler.
Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you.